One minute. Stand by. In five, four, three, two, one.
Good evening and welcome to the March 7th, 2016 Long Meadow Select Board Meeting. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
My Pledge of Allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we start in the announcements, I'd like to make, well, I guess it is an announcement. We most likely are going to break at nine o'clock, go into executive session for a short period of time, then we will come back to open session for those of you not only in the audience, but also the ones that are watching us from home. It's not for certain yet, but looking at our schedule, we think we're going to break about that time, so we'll see if that comes about. Any other announcements? None? Resident comments?
Hisbone, 34 Elizabeth Circle. I just wanted to say, Kim King and I are here to answer any questions and help any discussion with an agenda item that Marie has about Energy Task Force, and I was respectfully requesting if you could move it up the agenda because we have small children that we have to pick up from gymnastics.
Yeah. Okay, thank you, Liz. May not be able to accommodate you because we've got a lot of big ones ahead of you, but we'll, we'll see.
Right, maybe put old business back.
Yeah, yeah, I know. We'll, we'll see and consider it. We've got a lot of big ones tonight.
And we'll be fast.
We'll be fast. We'll run you out of here on a rail. Right around the news. Richard, you're coming up, okay? Nothing on there? Counselor Prushion? Okay. Go ahead, Richard.
Richard Elias, 608 Frank Smith Road. As members of the Select Board, citizens of Long Meadow. There's been a discussion going on as of what policies mean and how they should be applied. For a while, now, you go back, if you take Russia, they had a seven-year policy that never was wrong because they changed it every five. Policies are made either to take care of a problem so it doesn't happen again, or basically to look for the future, to see what can be done to make it easier for the running of a town such as this. The Select Board set up policies to fund OPEC and for future roads and construction and other things that are recurring. And with this budget coming up, the school department asked for a lot more money than technically is available in the town to be distributed. Our town manager and CFO worked very hard to come up with something which could be palatable to satisfy those needs with the money that was available. Mr. Gold presented last meeting a chart showing what effect the elimination of the increase in the OPEC payments from our budget this year would have an effect over the next, what was it, 10 years? And that is a considerable amount. It's like compounding interest, which we could have in our bank accounts, but we're not getting anything in those now. It was a good effort, but we have to make a decision whether or not we can start going into those things for things that are not urgent, cutting payments that have to be done or should be done for our public safety people, to come up with monies for projects which are good projects, but are they really necessary projects? And are there other forms of funding them before we actually go into the future of the town? I thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Richard. Any other resident comments?
Yeah.
Jim Russell, 108 Keller Drive, Long Meadow. Select Board members, I wish to share something which warmed my heart tremendously last week. Back in the late fall, Tana Long Meadow was blessed with the addition of a new police officer in town, a four-legged police officer by the name of Kai. A German Shepherd, one and a half years old, from Hungary, together with Amanda Buskirk, they trained together, the purpose being to apprehend criminals and to protect citizens as well as the police department. It came to my attention last week that the department received a phone call that a elderly person with dementia had wandered away. Twenty minutes later, Officer Van Buskirk and Kai responded, and they found the individual in Springfield. The person was returned unharmed. So there is a perfect example of what a canine dog can do, not necessarily along the lines of law enforcement, but also for seniors so they don't die in the cold. I thank the Select Board for approving the dog. I thank town manager Stephen Crane for applying for the grant out of Boston and the $25,000 the town received. This dog is going to be one of the biggest public relations individuals this town has ever seen. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention, share that with the television audience that is listening tonight. The second item I would like to touch on is, I'm a member of the COA Board of Directors. We have eight members of the Board of Directors here tonight. I'd like to share with you how proud we are of our Executive Director, Amy Sada. And I'd like to read some information quickly about the three grants that she has secured on behalf of the Council on Aging Board of Directors. $2,000 one-time Title III mini-grant to purchase a My Senior Center touchscreen computer to expand our capabilities at the center. This enables us to track every visitor or volunteer who comes into the center and gives time. And the more the statistics are accurate, they are crucial in securing additional grant funds. A $25,250 three-year grant, total awarded $75,750 from Greater Springfield Senior Services to support kitchen staff salaries. This is the first year that Tana Long Meadow has received the award. In previous years, Faloka would receive the funds. This year, an increase in the dollar amount was saw and awarded. For the past six years, the Funding Request Award was $17,280. $36,729 State Formula Grant to fund four hours program coordinator per week, eight hours per week of outreach coordinator, new fitness equipment, professional newsletter printing, volunteer recognition, mileage, conference, continuing ed. training, and a coordinator program between the COA and the Fire Department to pay for installs of smoke CO2 detectors to low-income senior residents. This year, the COA received an increase as well as some past years, which was $32,000. Total grants this year, $63,097. Total grant funds last year, $49,280. Approximately 30% increase this year over last year. I for one cannot tell you how proud I am of Amy Sada and the phenomenal job she is doing for the Council on Aging and the Tana Long Meadow. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any, any other?
No, it's breaking protocol, but I think it's a perfect time to thank Mr. Russell for his contribution for the police dog. I believe it was a bulletproof vest, and thank you very much. I'm sure the new officer really appreciates that contribution.
We have debatable protocol. We moved this thing around and did it properly. Any other resident comments?
There are chairs up here that are stacked up.
Throw my coat off that time.
Grab another chair.
And there's a chair next to it. There's a couple of vacant ones up here, too. Okay? Would you like one of these chairs? Come on, come on up. Yeah, come on right around it. Select Board comments?
Alex? Couple of things. One is, I just want to commend the town for putting on the opioid panel last week. These panels are tremendous for boosting public awareness. Last year, when I, you know, issued a call to action for this board and the school committee to take, you know, aggressive steps toward dealing with opioid addiction in this country, in this town, it was because I had attended a panel at the federal courthouse, and, you know, you can see it, you can know about it, but when you actually hear from the doctors and the treatment providers who are dealing with it every day, it really is arresting. And, you know, that's the kind of awareness that we need across our community, especially with our kids. And it's, it's a little disappointing that, you know, at this time of increasing awareness, you know, that we're not able to fund a health teacher at the fourth and fifth grade levels. And everybody knows that, you know, that's about the cheapest and most effective way of dealing with this problem. The second point I'd like to make has to do with crossing guards. At our meeting on Friday night, we had a presentation from the police chief, and what we heard was that there's a plan to reduce the number of crossing guards from 23 to approximately 16 to 18 positions. I asked for further information, the data that supported doing that. I haven't received it yet. I heard a couple of different things, and I'm not really sure what's going on, really, because originally the police chief had recommended fully funding this program, no cuts. But then I also heard from him that the cut that is in the budget is not a bud, is not a cost-cutting move, but based on need. So I'm not really sure what the rationale is. I, I am sure that it certainly has the potential for impacting a lot of people. One of the things that I've noticed over my three years on the board, you know, I've had residents and parents come to me and say, "Look, you know, we need a crossing guard," or "Don't cut our crossing guard." Because what happens is, parents who are trying to get to work can't get to work because their kids can't get to school safely. And we've even had instances where parents having to volunteer to be the crossing guard to allow some, you know, a neighborhood full of kids to get to school safely. So I would encourage anybody who cares about this to get involved now, because if we pass this budget as it is, as it's being proposed by the town manager, we're going to have these cuts baked into the budget, and it's going to be pretty difficult to get those positions back. So I would encourage people to make their voices heard on this point.
Do you have Alex?
It is.
Okay. Anybody else? By the way, for those of you that did not watch our Friday night meeting, the Chief of Police said that he would get some statistics up, and that was Friday night about eight o'clock, so I, I can see there's justification. Maybe he hasn't got his comments to Mr. Grant as of yet. Our meeting was televised. Anybody who's really interested in seeing what took place at the meeting, I'd bring it up on LCTV and take a look at it, see the whole discussion. The, any other Select Board comments? Tom, nothing?
No.
Okay. Alex? Or excuse me, Mark? Marie? Rich? No. Okay, why don't, we're going to skip this agenda. You say 10 minutes?
Sure. As long as I don't have opposition. This is the Energy Task Force. We've put together about a year, almost two years now, a joint energy task force with the school committee, and Kim King and Lizbone are on it, and they're here to answer any questions, too. And it's never really been, we, we sort of had a semi-vote saying to go forward with it, and after our special meeting we had with the facilitator about the role of the Select Board in instituting policy, I thought it made more sense for us to really get a mission statement together and form a, put a structure to the task force so it could become more effective. And we really could start bringing policy and program recommendations to the various boards. So we put together a mission statement that is in the packet, as well as the task force, and the task force is to promote energy conservation, sustainability, and energy diversity throughout the municipal systems in the town of Long Meadow. By overseeing the Green Communities Agreement, which is really, there's another term for it, which is can energy reduction plan.
Therapy, yeah.
Yeah. Making policy and program recommendations and education. The task force mission is to decrease costs and prepare Long Meadow to meet the energy challenges of the future. And we were talking about who we could include, so the next paragraph is the task force will include two members of the Select Board, two members of the school committee, a member of the recycling committee, a member of the transitions group, which is a private group in town, and a member of the planning board. These are just recommendations by the group. The Select Board can make changes on this. And what would be the main purpose of the task force would be to prepare an annual presentation to the Select Board and school committee, including what the previous year's energy consumption was, Green Communities Project Report recommendations for the next Green Communities Project, and recommendations for policies and projects to promote energy reduction, sustainability, energy diversity. It's not as if we would be making any actual policy decisions that would be really in the hands of the board. The only thing is, we'd be gathering the information and bringing it to the two boards and trying to coordinate something between the two, and it's really, we're looking at a cost reduction.
Are you going to present a motion?
Yes, and so I, the energy policy, I'm not sure if people are ready to do that because that's something that each board really has to decide, but I was wondering if I move that we accept the Energy Task Force mission statement and composition as written in the...
Any attachment? Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second, we're under discussion. We've already had a lot of discussions, so I guess now, if Marie approves, any Select Board members have any, any concern?
Discussion or questions even?
Yeah, I just have some, I think it's a great idea. You know, in general, I think creating a task force, my preference would be to have us discuss it at a meeting and vote on it at the next meeting, only because there may be things that people want to talk about. But, you know, I read the first statement that said mission statement, encourage, decrease consumption of energy resources. I, I think that's too wishy-washy. I'd beef it up to say, work to enact policies and investments that decrease consumption of energy resources. I think that's what we want the task force to do, is to work actively to enact policies and investments, which is make recommendations. That's more than just an encouragement. So, but, I mean, yeah, you know, what, to make up, I'm not, I hope somebody thought about it more than I have in the last 10 minutes, or since I first saw this on Friday. I don't know if that's right or wrong, but, you know, certainly a good start.
Right. Any other suggestions?
Well, I think when it comes to energy, there's, you know, folks do need a lot of information about it. I mean, you know, we, we take a lot of things for granted, you know, we, like I just had an apple today that was probably in cold storage and is probably local. I mean, I, I buy them hoping it's local. But, I mean, oftentimes, we buy fruit from Argentina, you know, a lot of stuff is from California, and you think about all the energy that's used to fly that food here. So, you know, I mean, a program that would help promote local farms also would be great because it has a big energy savings, you know, in terms of all the fuel it takes to get here, so people don't really think about that. Yeah, so, no.
Okay, congratulations. Alex?
I'm, I'm in favor in general, you know, who's against decreasing energy consumption. I mean, that's kind of a no-brainer, but, I mean, I guess the, I do have a, I mean, I didn't really take the time to try to wordsmith this, but like I noticed, the second paragraph is not a complete sentence. I mean, it, you know, I'm not sure we necessarily want to kind of put our stamp on it, and, you know, Mark had some suggestions. I guess what I would suggest is maybe we could have some edits to kind of, I don't know, sharpen it up a little bit, you know, it being a, something that we're going to put out to the community. And then I guess the more substantive point I have is, you know, this joint, having this be a joint task force. I'm not sure that we need two members of the Select Board. I mean, it's not going to be me because I'm, I'm going to be stepping down in June, so I guess it's more your, I mean, I'm just thinking like a seven-member board, you know, to have two members, like, it seems like one would be sufficient, and so that's my comment.
Okay, the general, I, there seems to be, there's been two comments refer the document which is given, and Mark just whispered here that we haven't had any input from the schools on this either, and it'd be part of it, so.
Well, I was hoping that we would bring this in front of, yeah, we would have the Select Board vote on it, they would vote on it, and any changes, we could always bring it back. But I've included your change, and Alex, I've included task force instead of tomorrow will promote, and one to, two members to one. And what we can do with there seems to be no objections, and you're just talking about details. We could maybe put this to the next meeting, I'm not even sure, on Wednesday? If we can just bring the final changes on Wednesday, or, and then, if, we're just talking about wordsmithing, and it's not something we're going to be discussing and moving forward, and then we could even have the energy policy voted on, because that will give you time to really look at that. And if the school committee, well, you put it in front of them, if there are any major changes, then we can always bring it back to the board to revote it, because it's not like a bylaw, something we can, it's a living document, we can change and move around as we go along.
Okay, you want to draw your original motion, then?
Yeah, I'll withdraw it and we'll make changes. Is there anything that you wanted to say to the board, since they don't seem to have questions?
Yeah, there doesn't seem to be any questions on the matter of the task force, it's just the wording of the document.
Which is fine, yeah, I mean, we've been working on it. We've talked a little bit about it with the school committee anyway, here and there, so, I mean, they're very aware that it's, we're having this conversation with you, so.
Okay, and you got a meeting, what, Monday?
Tomorrow.
Yeah, run, you, see if they, see if they've got any comments, and get back to Stephen or myself, and we'll get, or Marie, and get them incorporated in this policy.
Okay.
So, let me, I propose a question. Do you feel, do you feel like the school committee's, you know, behind this solidly?
Yeah. Anything we can do to reduce the costs?
Sure, sure. It's good. And I guess the other question I had, to me, what's interesting also about this is just the idea of a joint board or joint committee. We don't have much experience with that. There, there was a number of years ago, the Budget Strategies Committee, which was a joint committee, and then that, that sort of went by the wayside. To me, what's interesting about this is that what the example it might set for other areas where we could collaborate more.
I agree.
We, we have a green committee that, or a green team that we've had for years, and doesn't seem like you guys have a green committee at all, so I think bringing both boards together so we can share our, you know, savings and...
Well, when we're looking at some of the things that we were talking to, to some of the people about, was, it was not just bringing it to the schools, it's bringing it to the municipal buildings as well. And so it makes sense to be able to work with, I mean, Marie seemed very interested in it as well, obviously, so.
We've been doing this on an ad hoc basis, Kim. I mean, we, you know, I remember we've gone through buildings and, I mean, I think we've finally finished paying for it, but it was, it was one of these things where the, they installed all high-energy efficiency bulbs and deducted it from your, you know, your charge for the cost over like two and a half years on our, our energy bill. The only thing I would comment is that I'd be, agree with Alex, that I'd be willing to give up the two members of Select Board to maybe get some good input from town residents, and maybe we want some, want that, so I'm, I'm open to a different kind of a makeup on, on this as well.
Yeah.
And one of the things I was trying to avoid was us having to interview jointly two different groups, because that just doesn't work.
So just put in there who gets to appoint the people who get in here. If there's two citizen people, let the Select Board interview one, the school committee interview the other, and then we're done with it.
Stephen, did you have a comment?
Yeah, I would just like to encourage those who are going to be a part of this to look at consolidating budget line items for utilities, which is really the best way to save money, because we are already doing tons of energy efficiency things. We are a green community, we already write annual reports on energy efficiency, so a lot of this codifies things we're already doing, which is fine, but if there's one way to really help save money, it would be to consolidate budgetary utility line items. So I'm hoping the school committee will be open to that.
All right.
Thank you for moving us out.
Thank you. I, thank you, yes.
Yeah, you're welcome.
And so we need it on the next agenda.
Yeah, it's on the next agenda.
And then we can, anyone who has changes, please send them to me before then.
Any special requests you have of that next agenda, you can get them to me in advance?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, that was it? Okay.
Okay, LCMAC interviews, I think, LCMAC interviews. This is the, I think we have three people going to interview tonight, and this is for Local Community Mitigation Advisory Committee. It's just part of our casino package, and do you have any?
It's actually part of a regional thing, not really, it would be representing the town on a regional committee that is set up under the Massachusetts Expanded Gaming Act.
Right.
And then that regional committee then filters its recommendations on mitigation to a, ultimately up to a state subcommittee of the Gaming Commission, and then eventually the regional recommendations are consolidated statewide, and then the Gaming Committee, the Gaming Commission makes decisions on developing guidelines for mitigation, things like that.
Okay, yeah, I was going to read this, but I guess you've summarized it, so I don't have to read it to identify for the folks at home what we're talking about. Do you think you've got enough out?
Sure.
Okay. Okay, so we've got three people to put in. Daniel, you want to come up to the front desk, please? Daniel, you want to come up to the front desk, please? I guess to start with, Daniel, introduce yourself, give your name and your place of residence and then if you can follow up and tell the board why you'd like to be chosen as the person to represent our community.
My name is Dan Lino. I live at 123 Hopkins Place in Long Meadow. I've lived here for about 14 years. The reason I was interested in this is that I have both the educational occupational background in both safety, construction of utilities, I have a master in public administration. I'm very interested to see how the casino is going to affect the community and how some of the mitigation monies are going to be able to improve some of the detriments the casino is going to put on the town. I was especially interested in some of the things that the casino has been putting out lately. They have a group between the two, the Pequots and the Masha Soiits. They have a group because they're fighting, they're trying to put together a casino and MGM is fighting it and MGM just put something out the other day saying that in their opinion, the best place to put it is the furthest possible place away from MGM Springfield. So, I was shocked when I read that.
Stanford, Connecticut was.
Fairfield County, they wanted Southwest Fairfield County, which makes sense because, I mean, that's a very, you know, wealthy area, but it is the furthest possible place away from their investment. So, I just think that when we're, when we're dealing with the casino, we have to realize that we're dealing with people who are duplicitous at best. I mean, they are professional gamblers and as you all know, the house always wins. So, I think you need someone who's going to go in there with their eyes wide open and try to hold their feet to the fire for some of the things they've agreed to. Some of the things they just put out about how Long Meadow shouldn't be a surrounding community because even though 30% of the traffic they estimate is going to come from the south, you don't have to drive through Long Meadow to get there because I-91 doesn't have an exit in Long Meadow. And I don't know of any of you, but anytime there's an accident on I-91, everybody drives through Route 5. Route 5 becomes a parking lot. So, so I think that's something that they need to be held to task on. And unfortunately, the way Route 5 is set up is there's really no way to expand it. I know the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission in 2005 put out a study saying that if you synchronize the lights better, it might work better, but, I mean, if someone who drives it every day has to come home and work, you come and work four, five o'clock at night, that place is a parking lot until you pass Converse. And there's really no way to make the road wider without, you know, hurting the character of the town and I, I don't see any way that's, that's usually what happens. So, I mean, yeah, you can make the lights time better, I don't see that really helping when there's hundreds and thousands of cars trying to drive on a two-lane road. So, did you guys have any questions for me?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah. Yep, go ahead.
I'll start. Thank, thank you for your application. I just want to point out that, that my understanding of this position is that it's a regional committee.
Yes.
That doesn't necessarily have to do with mitigation in, in the town of Long Meadow. That's really been set up differently, but rather looks at potential other impacts of the casino that have not been anticipated and potentially discusses and, and, I don't know if the right word is lobbies, but discusses with the, with the Mass Gaming Commission making changes or additions to potential mitigation to address unforeseen things that have come up. Is that a?
Well, it, it's, yeah, it's closer, it's closer, yeah. I think the thing is we have in every community, not every community, but I think there are nine in the region, have separate freestanding surrounding community agreements. That is not what this committee deals with. And the stuff you all just described, Dan, is all stuff that's tied up in our, our surrounding community agreement with MGM, which is really now arbitration award. The state has, separate from any kind of mitigation funds, agreed to between a community and MGM in those surrounding community agreements. The state has a separate pool of money that is funded by gaming revenue generally that can be used for mitigation and part of it is, and so this is basically recommending guidelines for how those monies should be allocated for things outside the scope of surrounding community agreements. And then I, I think making recommendations on, you know, specific types of mitigation that will be needed in the future. It's really more of a stock gap in case things are unanticipated, but the stuff you laid out is really kind of over here. And for those who didn't catch the debate originally, I was the appointee to the Gaming Commission or to the LCMAC, to this committee, as were a lot of, you know, municipal leaders elected and appointed. But according to the State Ethics Commission, you can't be, if you're on the committee, you're a special state employee, you know, the ethics laws, you can't be a special state employee and a municipal employee. So, it's this kind of quirky thing where somehow even though as town manager, you know, I'm regularly in tune with the DPW and the police and the fire and have a good handle on how things are going to be impacting them, I can't serve on the committee that's going to represent that. So, we really want someone who's going to work closely with the town and represent the town's interests for things that are unknown as of today.
With that in mind, now I have a couple of questions. My primary question is time and time commitment. This, you know, this, this committee has in the past met during the normal business working hours on a Monday through Friday and I'm just wondering about, you know, your ability to make that time commitment. I don't even know if they're standing times like the second Tuesday of every month or whatever it is. I suspect they may change it, but, but I, that's a big concern to me of somebody from Long Meadow.
I mean, I have a full-time job, but I would make myself available for the meetings.
Right.
And I was interested in your background. I know you had written a little bit, but you want to tell us a little bit about the background because we're going to be looking at municipal systems and things like that that we didn't anticipate that were impacted.
Well, currently, right now, I work for the Department of Labor, Occupational Safety and Health Administration, so I'm well-versed in safety and public safety and how projects work like that. I also, before that, worked for Verizon for a dozen years, involved in the construction of outside plant facilities. So, I'm well-versed on anything with construction of any kind of utility, whether underground or aerial plant. So, I also have a master in public administration, so that's basically like, I went to school to learn about paperwork and how governments work, so.
That's wonderful, thank you.
Did you find out, figure it out?
Not yet.
Okay. Comment or questions on it? Alex, any? Tom?
No, very impressive resume. Thank you for considering us.
I, I don't have any questions. I think pretty well-covered were my questions, Lynn, and I've read your application, so we're blessed, we've got three very strong applications.
Yeah, I think we should note to all three applicants that by our, our policies, we will make an appointment at our next meeting or at least a week from now.
Next regular meeting, maybe.
Next regular.
I would assume by then.
Has to be at least seven days, not, not more than 28 days, we'll make notification. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We're back online.
Stephen?
We're back online. Richard, we're back online.
All back online? Good, good. Foley?
Foley?
Foley? You're right, there are two Stevens, I'm sorry.
It's dangerous.
Good evening, Stephen Foley, 87 Conference Street, Long Meadow, Massachusetts. And lived at 87 Conference Street for the last 27-plus years, raised my family there and is probably most you know, retired as the fire chief and emergency management director here in Long Meadow in 1993. Currently semi-retired, self-employed, do a lot of consulting work and risk management, incident management, both within Conus and out of Conus. So, we do hazard analysis, we do mitigation work. We just finished coordinating the entire training of the entire Baltimore city, Baltimore County region after the civil unrest there, so we've been fairly busy. My background besides public safety is, as you've seen from my resume, is chief of special operations for the United States Capitol Police, responsible for 42 city blocks plus the protection of the members of Congress. Mitigation efforts was a primary role during the heightened threat level back in 1993 up through 2013. Currently serve on a national incident management team, so I'm sure the chairman is very familiar with those, having worked for the National Park Service. So, our team, as I sit here tonight, is actually in Flint, Michigan, managing the point of water distribution there in Flint, Michigan, under the auspices of the EPA. So, from a mitigation effort, part of incident management is mitigation. And we look at things from, not only from a local community standpoint, but from a regional standpoint and how it impacts the region. Our experience with our incident management teams, especially out in the Midwest, is we look at community fire-wise efforts and how we mitigate those large wildland fires working with our federal, local, county and state partners. So, there's an education process there with those communities. Here in the Commonwealth, when I was fire chief in Ashburn, Massachusetts, which is in northern Worcester County, I was in charge of the regional EMS for Worcester County, representing the fire and the emergency medical services. As you all know, Worcester County is the largest county here in the Commonwealth. So, when we looked at mitigation efforts in that area is what brought the best level of service to the customers. And from a county standpoint, we had to look at how it impacted the rest of the Commonwealth, not only in eastern Massachusetts, but specifically western Massachusetts where Worcester County borders three of the western Mass counties and how that impacted that. So, that built up the EMS system to where we have it today and I believe Long Meadow is probably one of the beneficiaries of that, of having an excellent EMS service here across the Commonwealth. What I see, I have the availability, time, I make my own schedule. I'm more than willing to contribute back to the town. The town's given me a lot, given my family a lot and I see this as an opportunity to participate in the town.
Okay. Questions?
So, I guess, this is kind of, I mean, you said you're semi-retired and on your resume, which is extremely impressive, says that you teach in the United Kingdom and work in Alabama. Am I getting those definitely right?
Yes, that's all contracted work.
Okay, all right. So, but you think you'd be around enough to make the regular meetings?
Yes, if they, if, it's all, you know, based on a schedule, they put out a schedule, if you want to teach, you make yourself available. If you're not available, then you don't.
I got you. Okay, thanks.
And that position at, in Alabama is the Department of Homeland Security's National Center for Domestic Competence. So, it trains emergency management personnel, law enforcement, fire service, National Guard from across the country.
Mark?
Why, why the casino committee, though? Why, why do you see that as something worth getting involved in?
Well, I think as Stephen articulated, is that you folks and members of the community have addressed the local issues and potential or possible impact on the town of Long Meadow, but I'm looking at it from a regional standpoint and a long-term standpoint. The previous speaker certainly mentioned the impact on Long Meadow down on 91 and even though Long Meadow doesn't have an exit on 91, as you all know, both Long Meadow Police and Long Meadow Fire respond to Enfield and Springfield on interstate 91. So, I think it has, to answer your question, Mark, it has a much bigger impact than looking at Long Meadow. And where we are looking, we, the town is looking at regional services, a regional dispatch center. You know, there was discussion about possibly combining with East Long Meadow for two-town DPW. I think the more we look at regional things and the potential impact is maybe some of those mitigation efforts can look at regional services in a bigger aspect.
Would you consider that you, yourself, as having followed fairly closely the saga of Long Meadow with MGM along the way as we went through the original surrounding community?
I followed it to the extent of watching some of the hearings on TV, reading articles in the newspaper and watching the news reports, the live feeds from the Gaming Commission meetings at the convention center. I would say yes.
Right.
No questions? I think it's interesting, the, you've talked about going into areas where they don't have regional delivery of service and creating that, such as in Flint. So, I think that's an interesting skill set. Thank you for coming and interviewing tonight.
Tom, you have any?
Well, like, you know, in terms of the effects, you know, regional effects, did you have anything specific that you thought, you know, we should be aware of as a town in terms of the gambling coming in? I know we've all talked about the traffics, but, you know, from your experience, is there anything else you were thinking of?
No, matter of fact, Richard and I had a discussion about a month and a half ago about, about the traffic living on Converse Street and he gave me a very good answer about the traffic issues and how that's being addressed in the current sums of money, I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, Richard, about the money being used for Converse Street. So, outside of traffic, yes, I see probably one of the biggest issues is population surge. Not people living in the town, but the amount of people coming through the town and into the region. And when you look at other things that are happening concurrently with the casino, so if the Big E's going on, if there's concerts going on at the Mass Mutual Center, if there's things going on at UMass of Benhamers or the five colleges, is, how does that all play against one another? So, when you look at mitigation, you know, part of the role of emergency management is not only to focus in on what is seen as the problem, but also to look at the big picture.
All right, okay, thank you.
Yeah, just, I guess I, as, as I go through these interviews and looking for somebody to appoint, one of the things I'm going to be looking for is somebody who's going to be fairly aggressive in terms of making sure that the surrounding communities, and this isn't just for Long Meadow because it's part of a, a community broad-based agreement, but that the surrounding communities are willing to fight MGM for what they ought to be paying as part of the mitigation for, for any disruption to our prior way of life. And I guess my question is, you know, does that jive with what you see your role as doing here or is it, you know, I mean, I'm, or my, I don't want to put words in somebody's mouth, or are you comfortable doing that or not doing that? And I may be alone amongst the five people here, but.
I, I guess I can answer that very simply, Mark. My nickname, since I've been three years old, is Bulldog.
Thank you. I don't have any questions. That's a good way to finish it. Thank you, Stephen.
Thank you. Appreciate your time.
Okay, have a nice evening. And as Mark mentioned earlier, we'd like you to be at our next regular meeting. Stephen?
My name is Stephen Morantz, 117 Rugby Road. We've been in Long Meadow for about 21 years. My background, actually, I was on the finance committee of this town, 2002 to 2007, was the chair from 2004 through 2007. Prior, before we came here, was on the school committee in South Atlantic, Massachusetts from 86 to 93, chair of that committee from 87 through 93. So, actually understand a lot about how government works and the relationship between appropriations committees and school committees is a fairly interesting one. I'm a financial consultant by profession, I've been in the business for 33 years, understand budgets, understand town budgets, finance committee to be fairly of interest to me. I, from what I understand of the committee, though, it's, of the regional committee, it's a regional committee made up of each, I assume Springfield has, they may have more than one, but all the impact the committee sends a representative to this committee. It seems that the major point of this committee is to send a representative to another committee that then, then actually takes their recommendations to the Gaming Commission. So, this committee is sort of at the bottom, this is, this is down here, they send representatives to the next committee. I suspect, I, you know, I, and I think the major point of this, of the, of this committee is to appoint that person to go to that committee to say, these are our concerns. And obviously, I express all the concerns that you've heard here about the impact on Long Meadow. I, I, I think that it's obviously going to have a big effect and, and, and the impact is, is bigger than I think what we've heard so far tonight, though. As, if you read the law that actually created this committee, there's actually a separate part of the law about a gambling addiction subcommittee. I mean, so that's what the state's talking about, setting up a gambling, you know, and God knows, you know, we, we, my wife went to a couple of these hearings and, you know, if you happen to be the parent of a 19-year-old child who's going to go hang out, you know, what are we going to do on the weekend? You know, we're going to go to, there's a place to go, it's the casino. So, I mean, that, that kind of issues need to be addressed. I'm not sure that this committee is going to get to the bottom line, but it's going to address those committee, these feelings and then get to the next stage, which is sending someone to speak to the state Gaming Commission.
I'll start with some of the same questions, Stephen. Thank you for applying. One is a, a time commitment, again, I, you know, this isn't a.
No, it's not a problem. Surrounding the committees I've had in the past, also, from what I read, at least I believe this committee meets once every six weeks and meets late afternoon, not a problem. this committee meets once every six weeks and meets late afternoon, not a problem.
Okay. And my second question is, it's, and I think you've somewhat addressed this in your comments, but your awareness of, of the Long Meadow history and through the negotiation with MGM, it sounds like you...
Yes.
Okay, and, alright, thank you.
I'm aware of the adversarial nature of the...
We came to an agreement to mediation, and actually, not mediation.
Arbitration.
Arbitration.
Marie?
Thank you very much for coming and interviewing.
Alex?
Yeah, and I would thank you for applying, and, I mean, just to sort of amplify your point about the subcommittee, there was an interesting article in the Boston Globe today about how there's supposed to be a program for problem gamblers at Plainridge, and it's part of the statute, but it's not really being implemented. So, I mean, if you, if you ran into something like that where they're not re, the commission itself isn't, isn't doing what it's supposed to be doing, how would you handle something like that?
Well, you can, you know, you can only make as much noise as you possibly can make, and you've got to find the people to listen to you. And, you know, for better or for worse, the way this thing is set up, it's, it's the representative from this group of people, of which the Long Meadow representative is one of.
Right.
That representative then has to make her voice known to another set of people, who then have to make their voice known to the state, so it's, it's a big shout, but that's the best you can do, is, you know, just make your voice heard.
Yeah, I would, I was glad you mentioned the addiction issues and the involvement of our youth, you know, in going to casinos. I know, like, on a weekend, my son will get with his friends and they'll go up north and go rock climbing, that indoor rock climbing, you know, gym, and, and, you know, I dread the fact that in the future, kids will be saying, well, let's just go down to the casino and see what's going on. And so, when we looked at, you know, when you look at how a casino's going to affect our community and what they should be giving us, I mean, they really should be having resources here, you know, in the schools, the casino should be paying for those resources to, to make kids aware of the dangers of any addictive behavior, but especially gambling is an addiction. And so, whoever's on this committee, I think that's an important part of their job, is to, you know, keep track of that element also.
The other thing I'd say to Mr. Gold is, in terms of paying attention to MGM, all I know, from what I've read, is the whole thing is getting smaller, but the costs are going up. So, I mean, you know, something is not, something's a little out of whack.
Any other comments? I don't have any either, Steve. I appreciate you putting in, as I say, we've got, we've had three very strong resumes placed before us, and we'll make a decision between now and our next official meeting. Okay? Have a nice evening.
Richard? I think I read something, there's a fourth? Did I?
No, there's, there's a fourth, but is, we can't make it from either of the interview periods.
Alright, so...
And our past policy has said that we pass by.
Okay, alright, so, so, we're just going to be voting on these three?
I think so, yeah. Okay. Let's see, Town Manager, report.
Oh. There's not much, obviously, in the packet. We spent most of last week together, so we were obviously working on the budget and trying to get information turned around. The light, the signal at Redfern and Williams, we are awaiting parts for the, for the signals in the controller, that is why, I think, should be repaired hopefully by the end of this week. I believe the parts came in. In terms of the...
Stephen, could I just drop you before we move on to the next thing? Something like this, have we figured out who's responsible for it?
We fix it, and then we do file a claim against the driver's insurance company.
Okay.
I can't tell you that that works out 100% of the time, but we do go through that process.
Right, okay. I mean, I guess, I'll just add one other thing. I mean, there is always the option of filing a claim against the person directly. I mean, obviously, that doesn't make much sense if it's a small amount of money, but this sounds like a pretty significant amount.
I actually think we turn the whole thing over to Maya, and then Maya fights the battle for us.
So our insurance carrier?
Yeah, Maya is our insurance company.
Okay, so Maya's going to pay us for this?
No, Maya, they may pay us for it, but usually Maya does the legwork of fighting with the other people or the other insurance company.
Okay. Alright, I mean, I mean, there is always the option of, like, a small claims court action or something like that. I mean, because you're not just left to the insurance company.
Marie?
Yeah, I think we'd be interested to have a follow-up to the Select Board, a report to say if we were successful in our claim or not.
We do, we all do understand, though, that this happens every incident. This is standard SLB.
But I always assumed that we won those. Now, it's the first time I've heard there's sometimes that...
There's always a failure.
Well, there's no guarantees, I mean, there's no guarantees in insurance. Sometimes you settle, or, you know, but it's, like Richard said, we do this with everyone. It's not distinguishable in any way.
I guess I have a different comment, as long as Mr. Mazza, who's our DPW Director's here, and also, it's been my observation over the last couple of years that, that repairing traffic lights, and again, these are the red, yellow, green traffic lights, has been getting longer and longer, and often attributable to our contractor, and this is contract, it's a pretty specialty project, never having the parts available. And I guess my question is, is that because our traffic lights are just that old, and I can't believe ours are that much older than other surrounding towns, and ought we be looking for other potential contractors who actually stock parts so that we don't have to be a week? I mean, I'm not blaming our DPW, I mean, I, that's, that's the deal. I support the fact that we, we contract this out, but I can remember three or four other incidents of this that seem to take an awful lot of time. Now, turns out, Long Meadow's kind of not too bad for, we stopped there, you know, my comment is, it's probably working almost as well, but, but there are times of the day it's a mess, and, and, you know, I just didn't get the sense, and I forgot the name of the contractor, I think it's Norton or something.
I don't remember the contractor.
But, you know, it just seems to be taking forever, and I, I just encourage us to find out what the, what the reason for all the time is, that, that you would think that if you had a service contract, and we're not the only town, on traffic lights, they would stock parts. You know, it's, it's not like we're asking for unusual things, and they don't.
Marie?
I have another question, though, which struck me, is, weren't we going to get that intersection upgraded with the renovations at the shops? There was a discussion that was going to be changes?
In time, yes.
Okay, so we're having to replace this, that's going to be probably replaced again within a year?
No, I wouldn't say within a year, no.
Oh, it could be longer, because I know they've started the renovations.
It did. What we talked about was the, the church property as well has been purchased privately, and there may be redevelopment in the offing there. And so, we were, we reached a mitigation agreement with the development of the shops, but the improvements aren't planned until we have a better understanding of what's happening at the church property. Because that may drive a different intersection configuration, it may, it may change the calculus on the numbers, ingress, egress, things like that, so we're, I mean, if it turns out that the develop, the shops expansion, if it comes online, and it turns out that that intersection drops to a level of service F or something, then we would obviously change that plan. But it wasn't in the work that the traffic consultant did, it wasn't projected to hit that.
It wasn't.
Just, just based on the shops. Now, they did, they did look at some kind of assumptions on the church redevelopment, but we really want to see what's going to happen there, so we don't invest in intersection improvements and then have to change them again if something comes on, comes online with that property.
Okay.
Please, continue. Or is that, you finished your report?
Town Manager, report?
Um, yeah, I guess for now, that's fine.
Okay.
We've got a long way to go.
Yeah, we've got a long road. Okay, motion to, to approve the February 16th minutes?
I'll, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes, the regular Select Board meeting of February 16th, 2016, subject to one correction, which I am about to, once it's seconded, here's a spell check.
I'll second it.
Okay, we've got a second round of discussion, you've got to correct it.
Yeah, the, under comments number four, Debbie, Town Manager's report, the police department is holding a police, I think the word should have come up, symposium, it came up something else in spell check, so if we make that word, the symposium, on March 1st.
Symposium, okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
No other corrections? Any, any more discussion on the minutes? All in favor?
Right.
Motion for the February, one abstention, February 29th?
I'll move we adopt the minutes of February 29th, 2016, special Select Board meeting.
Second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor? Motion for March 2nd?
I'll move we approve the minutes of the March 2nd, special Select Board meeting.
I'll second it.
At a second, any discussion? All in favor? Okay, COA Task Force slash Reverse Building Committee, discussion. Marie, you had started this at our last meeting, and we put it off to this meeting?
Yes, the Town Manager Task, COA Task Force, came up with a recommendation after asking further questions of the architects and engineering reports, and it was brought in front of the Select Board, and the Select Board, we started the discussion on whether we should be establishing another building committee for the COA senior center project, or should we even be looking at a townwide building committee? And discussion was to move it off. And I don't know whether I should just start with a motion on the floor and then go to a discussion, or do we want to have a general discussion on the two possible avenues?
What's your, what's your pleasure? It was your issue that you brought up.
Well, right now, I think that we should probably just go ahead with the building committee. I think that maybe the next evolution of both these projects should be a townwide building committee. We might want to establish one now. I think that there was a lot of discussion on the location that was chosen, because the Task Force came up with a specific location, and the location that they were recommending based on the costs and what the final product would be, would be what was called Site One at Turner Park, which is right next to the fields. So as you're facing the fields, Turner Park, it's, it would be entrance on the right, right behind the fields, before you really got into the main park, which would require a bridge over a gully or a stream, and not near any of the conservation area or the lake. I think there was a discussion on that, but if, what the COA is really looking for is that we really move forward on a commitment to a site so they really can start the fundraising, they can start moving forward on the project. I know that there has been discussion in regards to the Wolf Swamp fields, and there was questions brought up about whether Turner Park does also have the deed limitations. From my research on it, there, I don't seem to see any deed restrictions, plus the original maps that I was looking at down at DPW, which was back from 2006, shows it's not parkland, it's actually, though we call Turner Park, it's really town property.
I found the same thing. I looked at the deeds. Stephen, did you get a chance to look at that today?
I did talk to Town Council about it. He's working on it.
Okay, yeah, because I read the deed, there's, there's nothing in it. There was, I think there's 10 parcels or 12 parcels?
Yeah.
10?
Yeah. And what they had looked at was there were three possible siting at the Turner Park, and then the other location that was looked at was the current location at Greenwood, and, which would be in addition to renovations plus addition. And I went through the list of the pros and cons that the Task Force had gone through on deciding whether to move it to the new location or keep to the current, and they felt less disruptive to programs, would not interfere, it would interfere with bough fields if we kept where it was, and they were concerned the costs could really skyrocket when you start opening up.
But that discussion doesn't have anything to do with what we got before.
Right. So what actually, well, the reason I'm saying that is the COA Task Force was asking that we establish a building committee for the development of a new building at the Turner Parcel as recommended by the Town Managers Task Force on February 9th, 2016.
Yeah, that's more pertinent to the discussion.
Exactly. And so that's where we sort of are, and that was the motion I was going to put on the floor tonight.
Okay. We'd had a discussion briefly in this room, the difference between a Task Force and a building committee that Stephen proposed, which is used in some other municipalities in the Commonwealth, is that building committee would be a set committee that would be impaneled and stay impaneled 12 months out of the year, and that they would receive every developmental project. They would be the first sounding board, so it wouldn't be individualized the way it is here. And then out of that board, the recommendations would come forward to the Select Board on each individual effort, and they would be, it would be a multi-discipline team that would basically get all the answers before it got halfway into design, and they found that something overlooked. So there's a total different...
Right. The, if we went with the building committee for the development specifically on Turner Park, that would be different from the townwide building committee, and I know one of the things that we have been talking about, the need of building committees to really look at more of a generalized view of the town. So if we did put together a sitting building committee that would work on all future projects, whether it was the senior center or a new middle school or the DPW complex, it could actually also look at development of other properties to help support the outlined project. So we could really look more at a master plan and a actual long-term going forward. But also, you would also be impaneling people on this building committee that would have more of an expertise in the area, and having started with one project would, maybe we could see if some, the town was able to join various projects and try to do some cost savings there, too, through the building committee. Right now, we have the DPW building committee, which I'm not sure if the tat, the actual mission of that is to choose the location or to just bring that information to town meetings. So we sort of, that was the discussion that was going back and forth at the last meeting on which way we need to go. And I'm not sure if we take this and we create the townwide building committee for this specific project, if, does it mean we eventually roll the DPW back into this committee that we'll create? All I know is that we're looking for the next step. The question is, do we create another building committee specifically for that building project, or do we start moving towards the townwide building committee?
You've proven all confusion. Go ahead.
Quote my Yogi Berra, stage of who all over again. We were, you know, we, we've been here now with the, with the, based on the DPW building committee, and my opinion is, and it's my opinion, that, that having been on the school building committee, taking on the task of building and overseeing the, the construction, the design and construction of, of any municipal building is an awful lot to ask a group, and to ask a group to do two buildings or more that may be going up simultaneously, I think is not appropriate, not, probably not in the best interest of the town even. I see nothing wrong with separating out the people who are looking at the DPW facility from people who may be looking at, 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 at an adult center. I, I just don't see that there's a lot of synergies, we may be working with two different sets of architects and two different OPMs and two different, and, and I, I just think that we ought to separate, and that's, that's my opinion, and, and, you know, it's based on having been on and off and on, and mostly on the school building committee and watching that group work. And so that, that would be my approach. The second one would, would be that, you know, I think at this point, the, we ought to take the same approach with an adult center building committee that we did with the DPW building committee, which is, thank you very much for the Task Force, and we're going to form a, a, a building committee that's going to really take it from not just where they left off, but look at some, some of the key assumptions. I'm not sure siting's going to be one of them, but it might be. Clearly, there's an expectation that the DPW Task Building Committee is looking at the siting decision, and so why would we expect anything different from another building committee? I think we can't set two different sets of rules for two different building committees. I think if the, if the decision is a good decision, then it'll hold up, and if the decision runs into some issues, then it won't hold up. And I think that, having two different groups look at it, and, and, and a group that's perhaps more diverse than the first group who looked at it, that will validate the, the results. I'll tell you that I was surprised after reading the original Deitz report to hear that there was a recommendation different from what the Deitz report said, but then again, you know, it, it, there was a, it wasn't a straightforward, gee, you got to do this. I think, from my personal opinion, there is one difference between the adult center discussion and the DPW discussion, and that is, in the DPW building, the DPW facility, when we're done with it, we're going to go, and the thing's going to collapse, and it ought to be, and we'll pick it up and, and take it away. But in the adult center discussion, if we move out of, out of Greenwood Center, we've got to decide what to do with Greenwood Center, and, and I think I said this multiple times, and I said it in the DPW forum, we have to look at all end costs, and I'm not sure we did that. And, and if by, you know, the, the decision to move... And, and if by, you know, the, the decision to move, abandonst current Greenwood Center, it, it doesn't go away. You know, somebody's gotta do something to invest in it. The town, and even if we tear it down, we've gotta have the cost of tearing it down or whatever it is. And, and so my, my sense is that the building committee, if we put together a building committee, would be charged with identifying the all-in costs, including the remediation or, or disposal of the current facilities, or at least making recommendations of that. So in my sense, I think we, you know, summarize it, I think we ought to have a separate building committee. I think they ought to be chartered just like the DPW building committee was chartered. And I think there's enough differences and, and the, the goals may be, you know, different enough to, let's, let's do it the same way. Oh, by the way, I, I believe we should do that because I'm a believer that is, that the school building committee system worked.
Any other comments?
Well, I would just say that, you know, for me, it doesn't make sense that a building committee would really have much to say about the building they're leaving. You know, I mean, that's, you know, it's a town, you know, we, we have a, a senior center in there now and when they leave, they leave and we have to deal with the opportunity and the challenge of that. And so I, I don't, I guess I disagree with you on that, Mark. But I do like the idea of having separate building committees. And if we have two committees that are gonna be operating at the same time, they're gonna need similar challenges. And my recommendation would be to have those committees meet, like on a quarterly basis jointly, you know. And it could just be a select group of, of officers of those committees, just to touch base and see how, how things are going along in the process. But, you know, that way we would be having the benefit of two different groups of people who have experience sort of merging together just once a quarter, just have one meeting and say, this is where we're at and, and each committee would know where the other person was at. They'd say, oh yeah, you were doing at this point in the stage and this is what you're hearing about this. And I think that rather than having a, 'cause I also agree with Mark, having a, a committee where people were involved in multiple projects, you know, from his experience, it sounds like that would be an awful lot to ask of people. So I would support that idea, but I would like to see the committees, you know, for the, so, you know, the committee for the DPW and the committee for the senior center, once a quarter, just, even if it was just the exec, the officers would get together and just compare notes, you know. And I think that would solve, well, I think it would help. It would help, so.
So, I just had, I had a couple of questions and a comment. So what you were talking about before, Marie, about the different factors that led the task force to, to make the recommendation that did, has that been presented to us? I, I have to confess, I didn't look at the packet for February 16th because I, I wasn't at that meeting.
No, that was, they, they, the rest of the board asked me, well, what were the decisions that went into it? And I had taken notes and I read through the notes of what the various things, the pros and cons were.
Okay, all right. I mean, 'cause to me, what I, I would like to see as a work product is sort of an articulation of, of the factors that went into it.
I'd be glad to, to create that pros and cons list for you.
I'd like to see that.
Yeah.
Right.
And I'll go with the committee.
And I was, I was looking at the task force mission and ground rules and, you know, like some of the ground rules, you know, kinda gave me some pause. It said, it says, we move on from consensus and support that consensus as a group. So when I get a letter saying, well, this is what the group said, I don't know, you know, was that what everybody said? Was it what a, you know, majority said? I mean, it almost, you know, like they just pressured not to have disagreement and, and I don't know. I mean, and so that's.
I don't know why that was actually in the packet, but the vote was, I wasn't sure, was it nine to one? And everyone's pros and cons were, were put, were make it presented. And as I said, that was done orally. I have it written and be glad to sit down with the members and, and get a written document for you and what the pros and cons were. But the issue is, I thought we would have the boards and maybe, the, the task force was always willing to come and make an actual presentation of the findings and the boards and further questions. So if the board, the select board does want to hear that, even though they've finished the project, I'm sure they'd be willing to come forward and answer questions.
I'd support that.
I mean, I guess, you know, to me, that's the sort of thing that we give it some, you know, so.
Well, I was wondering if we could go ahead, 'cause I know the process of actually putting together the building committee takes weeks because you've gotta put out announcements, that we gotta collect resumes, then we have to look at interviews. And so I'd be glad to ask, and I'm sure they would come for a first future meeting, but I would still like to know if the board would be willing to start the process of establishing the building committee.
So, I mean, I, I'm in favor of a DPW-style committee, although the thing that gives me pause is that, you know, we're still no closer in my mind to what I think of as a capital funding plan that puts everything on the table. And, and, you know, you kind of alluded, Marie, to maybe this building committee would sort of have a more holistic view, although I'm not even sure as articulated that that would be really what they'd be doing. You know, maybe they, you know, their focus is on, you know, achieving a project, you know, which, you know, as Mark points out, is, is, is a big task in itself. So, you know, I, I guess on balance, you know, I'd be in favor of, of a DPW-style committee like we did before for DPW, but, you know, with the understanding that we really do need to get to a point of some overall capital funding plan.
Got it, Alex?
Yep.
Go ahead, Marie.
Okay.
Then I'll throw my little thing in there.
Why don't you throw yours in first?
Well, okay, let's talk about a compromise.
No, I don't want to compromise yet.
Okay, 'cause what I was going to say is the compromise is that establishing like a DPW-type building committee, but maybe we should look at creating this professional group that will start looking at all of these projects together and coordinate.
I don't think the group understands what Stephen proposed. There's, there's a, there's a given degree of misunderstanding. That group that Stephen was proposing looks at all projects, all the big ones, and, and they don't get into the details. They set up a blueprint, feasibility blueprint. You know, they would have certain things that they would check, like they'd make sure the property belongs to us. All these little things that the other committees sometimes don't think of as they're going along. And then they would just turn the project over and they'd come to the select board at that point. They'd have a recommendation, says, yeah, this looks feasible. And you guys figure out whether you want to proceed. Then you set up your, the individual task force like we did now. To have had a, to have had a town manager or a COA task force, I guess it was Town Managers Task Force, wasn't it? And to have gone through what they've gone through, including two town meetings and to have gone back to the architect twice, there is a deliverable that has been presented. Now, mind you, it's, it's still, still very schematic-y. It's not finished out. There's a lot of details left off. But I just, it bothers me is that we don't have a process in place even at this point to stop this wasted time. 'Cause there should not be all of that time expended and now we're gonna start over. And that's basically what we're doing. And we're starting over on the DPW scratch from day one. And Stephen and I were at the first meeting and you're having to go back through every thing that's already been discussed and talked about by people that know what they're talking about, only to start over again. And it's just, it's a lot of wasted effort. That's what's bothering me. And I think I mentioned this the first time, so we don't have a process. And the process is not that difficult to put in. And we've got more projects coming up. But I, I'd like to separate the two. The, the building committee that we talked about is not like the task force that you're talking about. They're at a much higher level. They're, I guess if we could get Jody in to talk about it, they were dealing with high-level types of them and then they reported to the town manager and the town manager went to the board and said, okay, we got preliminary green lights on this. This looks feasible and it's been looked at. And they're very high, not high-level people, but they're people that are very knowledgeable, you know, a host of sites. So it's, nothing gets overlooked. And then they turn it over and they back out of it. They don't take it all the way to construction. I mean, that group had nothing to do with construction. They may have reviewed a, a, a scopeless statement going out for technical service or something like that because they have the expertise, but. So there is a difference in the two. You've got a product that's been delivered right now. We could bring the mock-up boards in here and show the board. I wished I had brought them now, but, you know, you've got three sites that have been positioned on the, by an engineering firm or by an architectural engineering firm at Turner Park. The real question that, that I posed to Marie was, you've got feasibility now, but it's not been worked out to the engineering point. So we're not for sure it can even be put there. We think it can, but the engineering part's not done. And what I expressed concern to her was, if you're going to go into this parcel of Turner Park, then why don't you go back to the, and task the aid in front that looked at it? They've already done all the pre-engineering work on it. They've got floodlines set and everything set. And go ahead and plot a five-phase village in there, an entire village, along with the senior center. And finish the development, even if you never develop the whole thing. At least make sure that if you put that, you, the visitors or the, the center in there, that the utilities are sized for the entire site of what you proposed. Now, we know eventually, we're gonna have to develop Turner Park, I would imagine, for the, the survival of our community. We need the revenue. The revenue, it's a, it's an ideal place and if, I'm so afraid if we place this here and it's not consistent with what we could do if the funds are available, we're gonna miss a critical step. And I think that thing is at the point, I, I talked a little bit to Stephen, that one's not tangled up in the, all the courts the way the other ones are gonna be tangled up. This one looks pretty straightforward on the deed. He's gonna get a second opinion. I read the deed, it's, it's just a plain deed. It was just a transfer of the property. It was sold to us. So this one's a whole different animal. And I mean, that's my feelings, is stop and get an idea. Now, if you've got that idea, then you go back to the board, they and he comes right in and makes a presentation and says, here's what is possible at Turner Park. And then that person can talk about the cost estimates to redo the center and all that and the benefits. And now we've got something we can lay in front and say, okay, now we're looking at cash revenue, maybe tax revenue of $200,000. We at least know what we got if it's fully developed. And the second part, then if it's that big, then we can look for somebody willing to develop it and you might get a proffer out of this thing. You might get a free senior center out of the thing. Because now you're talking about somebody that could come in and develop a multi-multi-multi-million dollar complex within our community instead of those little piecemeals where it's so easy to make a mistake. That was my feelings. It's always been my feelings. And I don't want to delay this thing anymore. I don't think, I don't think we're gonna gain by delaying it. I just think, let's put that extra piece of polish on top of it before we make that decision.
Well, I think that actually could be two motions in front of the commit, this select board. One is establishment of the building committee. The other is there's some money left over on the Deets. Architect is, for this board, just ask for a continuation of the study to see maybe building some senior housing back there to, what do you call it? Support the project financially. So that could be something this board could actually ask for that study to continue because the funding is in place. But at the same time, we could tonight still start the process of the building committee for the senior center.
Richard, I just, I wanna build on, 'cause I think that you're talking about the kind of leadership, you know, at this board level, that you really is gonna involve select members. I mean, I think you, you'd have to, you know, I think the thing you're talking about is something where you would have two people from the select board and then you'd have other people from town on a core group that would feel like they could look at a project like what's gonna happen in Turner Park and say, okay, let's ask for additional stuff, the way, you know, Marie has just asked tonight, you know. That this, that would have to be like a subcommittee of the board that would really be focused on, you know, on building projects. And, and, and so I, 'cause I don't think a non-select board sort of group would feel like they would even have the ability to go on and say, well, let's look at a development plan for this whole thing. I, I mean, I don't know if people on the board would, but it sounds like some folks on the board would. And, and if there were people who were looking at a long-range plan, of course, all this would need to eventually get approved by residents. So it isn't like the, we have two people on the town who are so powerful where they're gonna control, you know, what happens to every open space. But I, I think that it would also, I mean, that's the only way I could see it happening. I, I can't see this being as a, you know, a separate building committee that didn't involve at least two members of the.
Right, well, remember, this project now is in the second phase.
Right, yeah.
It's not that preliminary. It's not the building committee thing that we talked, that Stephen was talking about. This now is when you said, yeah, this looks feasible. Now you're starting to develop a team to make it work. But they've already done a lot of the work already through the Deets report. And, you know, we read the Warren article and it looks like there was plenty of justification in the Warren article to get additional work done as long as we stay right there. And, you know, I, I'd recommend that that's what we do. I'd recommend that we take that, that plat and we fill it. And now we bring it back and put four phases on it, if you must. And then, and then don't spend a lot of time.
What was the word? You put that platt?
The plat, you know, the building plat?
Yeah, I'm not sure what you're referring to.
Well.
I think of plat as like a map.
Like a site plan.
Yeah, yeah, a site plan. A site plan.
For where?
For Turner Park.
See, this is, see, this is where I'm, I'm having a little trouble. I mean.
This, this doesn't mean you're gonna build it, Alex.
Right, I mean, and, and one of the things that we ran into with the DPW process was that you had this town managers' task force going on. You know, it wasn't meeting publicly, it wasn't keeping minutes. And then all of a sudden, there's this, you know, people in, in town find out, wow, you know, we might be losing, you know, a good chunk of Wolf Swamp Fields. And that became obviously something that the public had to engage in, you know, in a very, you know, significant way. And so to me, you know, trying, deciding that you're A, going to put something on Turner Park and B, you know, put senior housing and, and develop the whole thing. I mean, that's, that's, that's got a lot of different components to it and it's something that the community needs to really think about a lot. Now.
What do you think elected officials are supposed to do for this community?
I'm assuming that's a rhetorical question.
No, that's, I'm asking, I'm asking a direct question. Is it not, or is it not our role and function to look for the future of our community and make presentations to the public and, and make them as well-informed as we can about where we sense this, their community has to go? That's all we're talking about. And, and your assumption on the, this thing that it magically changes the output of a committee because of open meeting law is a very false assumption. I mean, you're trashing the efforts of this, of the task force. And there, there was an honest task force and they, this official committee now is gonna read over everything that they had again. There's nothing new. It's all the same information.
So, I mean, I guess where I would differ, I mean, since you asked the question of what elected officials ought to do, to me, I think that bottom up rather than top down. I, I don't think it's our job to present a package and then sell it. I think it's, I think it's much better, especially at this level of town government, to get the input of the public in the beginning stages. Not, not try to come up with a plan and then sell it.
That's what we're doing, Alex.
And I guess my point here is that when we engage in the process for the new high school, there are a lot of meetings that preceded any kind of decision. So to me, the opportunity to have public meetings and have that engagement on where the senior center ought to go is something that, you know, needs to have the, the public engaged in. And that's not trashing anything that's occurred.
We have had the public, see, I don't understand how you're going to get something to the public unless you have somebody working on it.
No, what, we were just talking about a DPW-style committee, working on the senior center.
You've had a committee.
With public meetings.
They've already got everything worked up. It's been to an architectural engineering firm. Their sheets made, I'm, I'm sorry, you hadn't been part of the process. You could have. I mean, you certainly could have gone to any of the meetings. They were, they were wide open. They were advertised.
Well, I mean, but, but think about it. We had to get, Marie had to read from her notes to talk about what the factors were. So, I mean, that's, that's a difference from a public meeting.
That doesn't mean anything's been hidden. This has been reported upon. It's been two Warren articles. It's been on the town floor. How can you possibly act like somebody doesn't know what's going on? I, I find this, it's not only a, I just.
I think if you were to take a poll and you were to say, by the way, we're thinking about developing Turner Park, I think that would be a surprise to the vast, vast majority of people.
I agree with you.
Okay, so that's why we need this.
Any poll I take is gonna be a surprise that happens in this room. Anything that we discuss, if you go to the outside community and ask them, they will look at you like, what?
But this is a very significant point.
It's all significant points. Yes.
The, the final decision's in the hands of the residents. What we're trying to do is figure out the process going forward. And I think we've come up with three possibilities of what we're talking about developing here. One is a, uh, building committee, similar to the DPW building committee for the senior center. The second is Richard's talking about taking some of the money left in the Deets architectural plans to expand the planned for, uh, the, uh, other sections of the park to see if we're putting sufficient utilities in now. And the third is the putting together some sort of building committee that will deal with feasibility on all future plans. And so, um, I, I think we should just go through the three in the form of motions and, yeah.
Go ahead. I, I guess I'm a little concerned here about where, where this is moving and how it's moving primarily because, Marie, just a couple of things that, that you went through. You know, I, I haven't reread and re-read the motion at town meeting, but I gotta tell you, I can't believe it was anybody's intent that they were spending money on trying to figure out how to develop Turner Field, Turner Fields, which it's not a park. It's Turner non-park. You know, and, and there, all the motions had to do with something to do with an adult center. It had nothing to do with anything besides an adult center. And yes, we spent less money. Thank you to the people who spent the money wisely. But to say, well, there's money left over and let's go spend it on something else, to me, we need to go back and ask if we're doing that. So for your item two, I, I just can't, I, I think we're, it's usurping power that wasn't given to, to, to anybody when that money was appropriated. Be that as it may. Just a, a quick comment about the task force. It's titled COA Task Force. And as I read through these names that were on it, I think everybody was on the Council on Aging.
No.
It actually was an adult center task force.
It was the adult center, yes.
And I don't know if I.
And it wasn't a, it, it, you know, it, it was a, they weren't members of the C, Council on Aging, but they were all participants in the adult center as opposed to what we tried to do with the DPW Task Force, which was get a broader cross-section of the town.
I have to correct you here. No, we actually had members of the, uh, the, the whole community that had nothing to do with the adult center, but usually were involved in some way with, uh, senior services. So, uh, the town manager did choose a wide variety. And, uh, there were members of the COA that were on there, but it wasn't all COA members. And it wasn't all.
Should we have somebody from the long metal sports groups who may be impacting Turner Field, you know, whatever it is?
That's why we're talking about the next building committee, is the putting together the next building committee like the DPW.
This team did, this committee did everything that needs to be done and there's no sense in taking another look at that. Says to me, it was a very good committee. They did a lot of great work. Thank you very much. I agree with Alex that we got a final report saying, here's where we're going. And it was different from a very, very detailed report I saw from Deets. And other than Marie's quick notes, you know, I, I didn't see what just, what turned this group around from what the other, other recommendation was. And I'm willing to say, I don't need to be involved in every single reanalysis, but I'd like a broad section of the town to do that through, uh, you know, adult center building committee.
You're gonna, it's, everything's gonna go to town meeting. Is that broad enough?
No, because I don't think a town meeting, that even if you take an hour to do the presentation, has the equivalent, uh, amount of information that can be back gathered.
How do you know?
'Cause you can't disseminate in an hour what these people did in, I don't know, a dozen meetings, half a dozen, twelve.
We have a, our open, our.
Okay. Well, we're, we're, what we're asking for though is to establish the building committee for the development of a building on.
But, but you've re-jumped to the conclusion for the development of a building on Turner Field. Why don't we ask for a building committee just to do what we did for the DPW? To go out and determine where the best place, you know.
Then all you have to do is to make an amendment on that so we get going. So, it, 'cause everyone see, there seems to be a consensus here that we're looking to, to create the building committee. Who's gonna be on it? Um, Tom's recommending two select board members. You're talking about a larger expanse, but I think we're all agreeing that, that, that the idea of a building committee is an appropriate next step.
What, the DPW, I mean, a senior center specific?
Yeah, a building committee. I'm sorry, if I said DPW, I meant, uh, the, the adult center.
Okay, a specific.
Specific for, a building committee for the adult center project. Now, the, uh, the task force requested that you, uh, agree with their conclusion of Turner parcel. But if you don't wanna do that and you just wanna have a generalized one, such as we were doing with the DPW, that's fine. The question is, what is the will of this board moving into the next step? It appears to be everyone agrees to a building committee. Uh, there's discussion on composition and there's discussion on, uh, the mission. On whether they're going to look at all the parcels again and give a more detailed report, or you could have the previous task force come in and give their report. Whatever the will of the board is, I'm, I'm trying to move this to the next step. That's all.
I, I gave you my opinion. I think that, I think that, that.
Okay, so why?
If, if we're gonna start with a building committee, and I, I understand, Richard, your comments, that, I think your comment was, you know, we're starting over again. And the answer is, yeah, we're moving at the speed of government. We're not moving at the speed of, of, of other things.
We don't have to.
And, and, well, and, and I'll tell you that, I think that the lesson learned is that task, informal task forces that aren't open and, and.
No, no, wait a minute, wait a minute. It has nothing to do about being open. You're making the judgment calls here. It's a select board member.
I'm saying, let, let me finish what I'm saying. Informal task forces that don't have the same rigorous reporting to the community as, uh, as an appointed task force has, as a, an appointed committee has, no. And by law, they don't have the same rigour.
There's still, there's no, there's no difference.
I have to, you know, at one this point.
Marie, where's the report?
Okay.
The report was your verbal report. There's nothing written.
May I finish my comment?
Well, you, you shouldn't be down.
Why on earth did this select board, when we were in December, I was trying to get you guys to do a generalize. She said, no, let's just do a, a town manager's task force on this.
That's right.
So that was the will of the board back then. We could've gone the other way.
That was the will of Mr. Gold.
If you want a full report.
And it was to get to a point that isn't this far down the road.
And Mark, this, the, the committee would be glad to come and give the report. But I'm sure the report, even if it was given to this board, there's a feeling that Alex is not comfortable with the closed meeting. You're not comfortable with the choice of the selection. So I say, anyway, any, no matter what they brought, did in the way of the task force, it's not their failure that's brought us to where we are. This board doesn't seem to have the will to go, so what I'm gonna do is we'll start with a motion. Anyone who wants to make amendments, let's see where we're going with it. So my motion is to establish a building committee for the development of a new building on the Turner parcel as recommended by the town manager's task force on February ninth, 2016. Is there a second?
Oh, I'll say it.
Okay, now, is there amendment or discussion?
We're on discussion. Stephen, do you have something to add?
The one thing I would like to offer to the, to the select board, I shouldn't say one thing. First, the report or the recommendation came in the form of a letter from the chair of the task force, who was not me. It was Mary Breath Brisron, who wrote a nice letter talking about what the committee's recommendation was. The thing I'll say about the task force, a task force versus a, uh, committee subject appointed by the select board subject to the open meeting law, is, um, that discussion, uh, really has much more to do with the relationship of the six of us than any other factor. Because had, and you say moving at the speed of government, those task forces got a lot of work done in a pretty short period of time. But there was not a will on some members of the select board's part to say, we trust that the task, town manager and the people he trusted to put on his task force were effective in their, um, analysis and did a thorough job and really, um, took their role of trying to make a recommendation on behalf of the town very seriously. It was, they didn't post meetings and keep minutes, so it all must have been some surreptitious plot by the town manager to, um, you serve a role or responsibility they doesn't have. That's why we had Bernie Lynch here. And if you're gonna, if you're gonna like try and look at everybody here that spent time on it in the face and say, that's not what it's about, then I, I don't know, then there's nothing more I could say about that.
Well, now you're putting words in our mouths, Stephen. And if you're gonna put words in our mouths, don't criticize going the other way. 'Cause I did not say that and did not imply that. So, you know, you've got, you've got a, you've got a chip on your shoulder at times about stuff like that. No, no, no.
Mark, you put an email to somebody else that it was a town manager's closed process. So the implication was abundantly clear. All I'm saying, and this is the thing that has upset me about this in the beginning. I asked, do we want a permanent building committee? No. Okay. I'll do a town manager's task force. Okay. The task forces, whether it's DPW or COA, those activities were reported on in every town manager's report. Standing items. COA, DPW, reports every other week. So we get to the end, there's some political controversy associated with the recommendations. So what's the first thing we do? We dump on the task forces. And the people, God bless them, who did great work and put in great effort, now feel like they're invalidated because of, really, I, I guess, I, I don't, there is no practical policy reasons why their work should have been rejected out of hand by this board. That said, when it came, when you made the suggestion, let's do a committee. Did I argue? No. What did I say? I think it's a good idea. But there's a toll to be paid, not only for the project, but also for, um, the, the toll to be paid by the people who already did all of this work and sat at the meetings and heard all the same conversations, now have to go and do it all over again. And do we wanna go down that road again with the Council on Aging or with the adult center task force? Okay? And if that's the role we wanna go down, fine. Truthfully, if you're gonna have a permanent building committee now, then you should dissolve the DPW committee and really do it the right way and have the permanent building committee take it over. And the membership should be people who are experts in buildings. Not people who either want a new adult center or don't wanna see Wolf Swamp Field used or don't wanna do, or have a, a preconceived agenda item that's political in nature. A building committee is people who know about buildings. And if we're gonna do that, let's just go back, get rid of the DPW committee and do one and get it right. If we're not gonna do that and we don't want to, and God knows, I don't wanna start over a third time, then let's appoint a building committee like we did for the DPW. Let's move on, but let's resist the temptation to reject information simply because it was a task force and not a committee.
Well, I think the, the select board unfortunately is at that position now where they're probably going to do that, which is move on to a building committee, 'cause we've done that once and we appear to be doing it again. And there's not too much we can do about it other than learn in the future that we shouldn't establish task force, um, town manager's task force. We should go straight to a building committee. So right now, I have a motion on the floor to establish a building committee for the development of a new building on the Turner parcel. And there was a second. Is there any discussion or amendment to that?
Yes, I have some discussion. Yeah. And I guess, you know, it, 'cause I, I feel this is important because what Stephen just said, uh, suggested that by my support of the DPW committee and, and a, a public, uh, senior center committee, that somehow I'm showing disrespect to the people that worked on it. I, I think everything that I've said has actually been the opposite. Um, I, I think what I've said tonight has been the opposite of that, uh, that I, I don't reject anybody's work. I respect their work. I respect, I, I know a lot of these folks. I, I respect them a lot. And, uh, so, so to me, to, to say that, you know, public input is important, you know, posted meetings are important, minutes are important, reports are important, that, that's not a disrespect to anybody. I mean, it's just, it's, it's showing, uh, you know, sensitivity that public engagement is really important. And, you know, the other point that I would make is, you know, I don't think the only, uh, people that should serve on these committees is people who know about buildings. This is, this is a political judgment. It's, it's not a mathematical proposition. You know, it's not a technocratic question. I mean, you know, the, the, you know, we had a presentation, uh, I think Mr. Petroff, you know, it was like a little over a year ago and they were, he was talking about the, the, uh, you know, advantages of the Turner Park location and looking at all of the water. He said it was Oz-like. And you know what? There's a lot of value in that. Looking over water, like looking at trees and, and being part of nature. Now, that's a, I, I don't know where that fits in, but it's not, it certainly goes beyond knowing about buildings. I mean, it's a political judgment. Um, I think people who would be impacted by the sports field, people who'd be impacted by development in there, who love nature, I think those are valid concerns. So, so to say that you're disrespecting anybody by saying that, you, you know, you wanna open up the process and get, uh, the, the public involved, because the thing is, you're not gonna have the support. You will not have broad-based support unless the public feels like they have been able to be engaged in the process and understand what's been going on and be able to go to the meetings and to make comments. I mean, I know you're, you're laughing.
No, no.
I'm not sure what, what I just said was humorous.
No, what it was, was, I wanted to say, since he mentioned me, can I comment? Like a Republican debate, so we can scream over each other for about a minute and a half.
And I'm telling you that.
That's what, I'm sorry. I went someplace else.
Well, no, no.
Wait, wait, wait a minute. Are you sure, Alex?
I am.
Okay, Marie.
You know, I missed the meeting beginning of December when you decided to go to the, it changed the form of the committee. And I would've voted against that. And the reason why is because I think the process, going to a second building committee, I think has actually ruined and closed the whole process and slowed it down. If we had had that report the end of January, we'd have started the series of public forums to discuss the pros and cons of all the location. We would've had more input by the community. And we probably would've had a chance to be able to put it in front of the community for the community to vote in the Maytown meeting. Now what's happened is everything has slowed down. We now have another small group. How many people read minutes? If we had actually had a series of public forums on television where, which were live-streamed, it would've been much more open. So, I, I don't feel we've really gained in getting residents to be able to. But that's the process we're in. We had, we went the task force and we went to the second rendition of the building committee. After we even decided the task force for DPW was not working, this select board decided to put another town manager's task force in regards for the senior center. So I said, fine, that's the process we're doing. This is the second level, which we're going to, again, have another group to talk about everything and make the presentation. And we won't be able to start the public forums now for another two to three months. So, if that's the way the board wants to go, I'm willing to go, just so we keep moving the projects forward. And when Stephen says that the people were insulted, well, in some ways, they were because it was saying, okay, you've done your thing, but we really don't like the way you did it, so we're shutting you down and we're moving to the next one. Yeah, the COA, the task force just pulled together for the COA project, but we're, we're, we don't really like the answers. We wanna build into another because there weren't enough residents and we want more open. Okay, fine. So we're going that way. Let's just go that way and move forward. Would I have done it that way? No. Well, I think there are better ways of doing it, whether it was, uh, Richard's idea of having one or we just should've started with the building committee that everyone was happy with to begin with. But it, we've stumbled a bit. Let's just keep moving forward. I think any of the work that was produced will shorten the work of the second building committee. We wanna expand. The second building committee might wanna take the extra town thousand dollars and do a further study on something and make a presentation to this board. Uh, but I don't think this board's gonna vote on locations on anything. In my opinion, it's gonna be the residents. In front of a town meeting, they're gonna make the decisions on what happens to any of the parcels in town because there are legislative branch and they're the guys in charge. So, um, I'm just looking to get the next step going on this, which appears to be, the will of this board is a DPW-like building committee. Now, if you're not happy with the idea that the recommendation of the task force is put in there, it doesn't matter because that information's gonna be handed over to the next one. And the presentation from the town manager's task force is probably gonna go to the building committee. And they will take that, all that in and respect that work of the first group, just like I hope the second rendition of DPW respects all the work that was done by the previous group. And if, what that composition of that committee is, it's up to us. But let's just move to the next step. We can't go back and change history.
I just, uh, one more comment before we call for a vote, um, is that, you know, I, I respect the work we do here. I think we try to do our best. And I, and I think that on the DPW committee, you know, when we decided on a location on Wolf Swamp, you know, and we put together another committee, we included people from that neighborhood, which I think is a good idea, you know? And I think that, you know, if we look at now and we say, okay, now it's gonna be moved to Turner Park and we put together a new committee and we may get some people from that Turner Park neighborhood to be on this committee and be aware of what's going on. I think that's a good thing. And I, I don't think we should look at what we've done and say we made mistakes. I, you know, I think we do the best we can. And so I'm ready for a vote.
Well, Richard, could I make a?
No, you, it's a war discussion. There is a motion on the table.
All right. And I'd like to make a motion to amend the original.
You wanna make an amendment to the motion? You want to make an amendment to the motion?
So, so the way I have in my notes Marie's motion is to form a building committee for the purpose of developing a senior center on Turner Park. My amendment would be to delete the words on Turner Park and that the motion be to form a building committee for developing a senior center.
I'll second the amendment.
Okay, we got discussion? Could you, uh, I'll, I'll ask a question of the originator. Can you explain your motion more? Give me the intent behind your motion.
Oh, you mean the amendment?
Oh, just amendment, yeah.
So, so, well, uh, so that we don't, so that the committee doesn't go into it looking only at Turner Park.
Okay, what would you expect the committee to do now, then? Now, we've already had a task force and we've got a, a report that was done to a survey of how many people and there's a lot of background work that came up to this point.
Can I say something about the original?
Yeah, I, what I was saying, I'm, I'm, I would like to, to know more what your thought process was.
Well, what I, what I'm imagining is that this, uh, committee would meet publicly and that there would be an opportunity to hear from the public on Turner Park versus the existing site versus potentially somewhere else.
Right.
And that they would take that into account and to get that community input. And, because again, it's not just, uh, it's not just looking at the architectural points. And, you know, to, to Tom's point, you know, well, what impact would that have on neighbors? You know, what impact would that have on people that are currently using it? I mean, I think those are, that, that's what I.
So you want them to start over then? Sounds like, you want to go back to square one?
Well, I, I, I think you'd want to be looking at the, the site selection.
That gets me back to my originals thing when I said we're wasting time in here and I can't believe the select board with the intelligence up here continues to make the same mistake.
Well, Richard.
We've discussed this four or five times in this room. We said before, we're, we're going the wrong direction. You can't have task force and then throw them out and start again.
Well, Richard, I mean, to the point about delay, though, I mean, we, we've formed this DPW ta, uh, committee and it hasn't met. I mean, Arlie.
Yes, they have.
Oh, they have?
Yes.
I, I.
It was a public meeting, you sent the notice, you should have been there.
Which, you mean the DPW forum?
Yeah, the DPW.
No, no, no.
The actual, the actual task force has met already.
All right, okay, but I guess my point is that Arlie Miller, you know, emailed and she was like, when are we going to meet? I mean, like, you know, it's, like, there was a bit of delay in actually having their first meeting, you know, so.
Not really.
I would like to speak to the amendment.
Okay, hold on, one minute, please.
Because that's what we're supposed to be talking about, is the amendment.
But just on your point, Alex, I just want to make sure. I thought that's what you meant, but you're, you're, you are encouraging the group to start over. To go back to square one. Well, wait a minute.
To, to look at the site selection.
Okay, I just want to make sure I had that straight on what you're requesting.
Exactly.
Okay, then get the public in, well, okay, okay, Marie.
Well, I think if we stay in with the actual original without the amendment, it will still end up going that way, Alex. And the reason is that once they start the meetings, and that every meeting should begin with resident comments. And if they find that there is a huge pushback from the community in regards to Turner Park, they know when they're going to have to bring this in front of the, uh, they could easily change the direction of the DPW project.
Then what's your objection, then?
My objection is that you've got to start out of moving forward in some way, instead of anticipating, oh, well, this can't happen, and so we have to sit there and we have to move it back and forth. Then they can't really start, um, getting the temperature of the residents. They can't start the fundraising, they can't start creating the diagrams, because then you're going back and saying, well, we need to sit down and, uh, and dither back and forth again for the next six months on what the location is. I say if you feel that way, we have a public forum and we present the task force meeting on a public forum and we establish the committee based on the recommendations. And if you take the temperature of the public forum, because the only final decision is going to be done by the residents. I, I don't think there's going to be any magic that's going to come out of massaging the details of the two sites again and then again and again, uh, in front, uh, and then making the decision. You could do that in one public forum, or you, this actual building committee will do that. If all of a sudden we end up hitting, they end up hitting the wall and say, you know, we're going back to the select board and we're saying, uh, we need to change the mission of this committee because we've discovered this land is unbuildable because something's underground. Or we've discovered that the traffic counts are so terrible here, we've got to move the location. Then they'll come back to us and say, uh, we need to change our mission, this isn't going to work. But if you don't start moving in one direction, you'll never know if that direction's going to work or not. I think you're still saying you've got to go in two directions at once, and I don't think you're really going to get the answer that way. I think you will get the answer by actually making a recommendation and then hearing. Because people aren't going to come to your forum if you just say, well, we're going to talk about this, the adult center in general. But if you say, we're going to talk about Turner Park, then you're actually going to get people in the room to interest in wanting to get involved with the discussion. Then the public discussion begins, then it becomes open. By actually saying, okay, we're, uh, we're going to, we're going to think about these two things, no one's going to get interested until you say, well, not only are we thinking of Turner Park, this is where in Turner Park we're thinking about. And not only that, we're thinking maybe, uh, saving possibly $4 million on the project, if not more, by building, uh, senior housing next door, uh, in this section of the park. Then you're going to get more residents coming out and talking and showing more interest. So I think actually, by not taking a step forward, you are almost keeping this behind the curtain. And that's, yes, you are, because then people aren't paying attention. They're not interested, because all along, we do have, so, that's why I'm speaking against the amendment, but other people might vote for the amendment, so I say we just move ahead of the vote.
Okay, hold on.
I just, because I actually want to kind of build on what you're saying and say something a little more general about process. Um, you know, throughout my career, I've done a lot of project-based community engagement. And so I, I know very well, A, how important it is, and B, how to do it effectively. And, um, the point about the minutes and the agendas is well-taken, lesson learned on my part. I think where I, where, and words are important, I think where I want to clarify and the reason why I feel like it's, it's a, you know, it's not disrespectful, I think, Alex, it's more of a disappointment. When you say we want to do this with public involvement, every single person, really, every single non-town staff person that sat either on the adult center task force or the DPW task force were town residents. And they are the public, just like any of the people sitting here or any people that you, any of the people, the four people that you appointed to the DPW committee. It's all the same, they are the public. And the thing about public engagement is, if you want, you, you raise the kind of rhetorical question. Well, you know, neighbors, neighbors may want to know how that is going to impact them. The reason why you take a smaller group to sift through detailed information is twofold. One, we don't have the engineering fees and funds to study every conceivable site, site and every conceivable option. So we have to focus it some way. And then the second is, you need a smaller group of the public to distill information in a more detailed way and make a recommendation that defines the "that" that you can then present to the public and so they can see how "that" impacts them. But to go to a public forum and say, hey, we're thinking about this thing, you know, it's great, people just want to get stuff off their chest and make, you know, comments about, well, you know, that may not be, uh, that, that may be not focused on the, the matter at hand or maybe more town-wide, um, issues, but it doesn't get you any closer to the end, to the end goal of the project. And so, the input we've already received on both the DPW and this adult center is public input, even if it wasn't given in a public meeting. I didn't swear anybody to secrecy in those meetings. I didn't say, we can talk about it here, but don't talk about it outside of here. The people were free to go and tell anybody they wanted about anything we did. So, to suggest that because the meetings were posted, it wasn't input from the public to the town on what the best approach is, just isn't accurate. And I think that's why the amendment, I mean, if the amendment passes, the amendment passes and it'll be essentially the same thing we've done for the DPW. But I can tell you now, having had our first meeting, I can tell you how, you know, kind of frustrating and demoralizing it is for the four people on the DPW committee who are on the task force, who are like, you know, all right, you know, here we go again, you know, wake us up when you catch up. And that's okay to do that, if that's what the, if, because we've already done that one time, the precedent's already set. But if you want to really seriously move the project forward, then can we just agree that the input we've already received is input from the public, even if it was in a non-public meeting? That was my only point I wanted to make.
Okay.
Wait a minute, Tom, and then, Tom.
Well, yeah, the only difference I see is, you know, when we put together the committee for the DPW, you know, we hadn't really looked at all the different locations, and so we didn't have a specific. But in this case, you know, there's nothing more to be known about the locations for the senior center. So, um, I can see, you know, not naming a specific site, you know, I don't think we have to wait on that.
Well, Tom, I mean, we've, the, the history of this is that there have been really two main sites. And it's been studied and it's been a very close question about what, the existing location or Turner Park. And I guess the, to me, to, to endorse Turner Park at this juncture, without knowing as what Mark called the all-in costs, I mean, why would we do that?
Well, what you would have is, you would have needed to have enough people on the committee to convince all the other members that Turner Park was a more viable option.
I don't, I don't know what they looked at. I don't even, I don't even know if they looked at the costs.
But no one, they must have looked at everything.
How, how do you know?
You know, well, the other side is that, you know, you didn't have people there who were saying, you know, this is the best spot. And, you know, so, you know, they've moved on, you know, they have a location. I don't think we can change it. I don't think, you know, I mean, you would have to handpick a committee to have them agree that Turner Park was the best place, because I don't think the committee that volunteered was going to do that. I mean, I just, you know.
I mean.
I don't think it's going to happen.
I mean, I, and part of the reasons why I said that they don't, I don't think they looked at all the all-in costs, because I don't think we've ever looked at, I don't think anybody knows what all the, all-in costs are.
It wasn't their task.
I know, and, and that's no faulting them, that's my point.
But you're not going to get that until you get a Class B estimate.
So, so I guess what I would.
We're eons away from that.
I mean, if, if, uh.
You don't understand construction.
If Turner Park is significantly more expensive, I'd want to know that before I endorse Turner Park.
Have you read the reports?
I have. And, but there were limitations to those reports.
Okay, but you're, that's about all you get for the money that you put into it at this point. And that's why the process moves incrementally forward. You're not going to get all-in costs until you're Class B going on the Class A estimate. And, and we're, right now, we're Class D estimates. I mean, these are just, these are off-the-wall estimates right now. Yeah, go ahead.
Couple of comments. First of all, Richard, if, if, you know, it, one of the things we talked about with the DPW task force was, we're going out for the DPW and getting, and what we're being told by the town managers, more detailed cost estimates of multiple sites, even now.
More detail.
More detailed, so we can understand the cost to a greater detail.
Right.
Okay. This motion, and I'm going to read it, because I, it says, "To establish a building committee for the development of a new building on Turner parcel as recommended by the town manager's task force." Now, clearly, Marie, I'd say if you, even if you deleted the word on Turner, on a Turner parcel, you'd still say, of a new building as recommended by the town manager's task force, which recommended Turner Field. So, it, as far as I'm concerned, if, you know, cutting out those words just takes a, gives a little bit of flexibility and what we're, but unfortunately, this motion locks this committee into Turner Field when we don't know the cost, just what we said. We, we, we have, uh, I don't know what the, you've talked Class A, Class B, it doesn't mean anything to me, whether it's plus or minus 20% or plus or minus 100% or 50% or whatever.
Well, that's where you're at right now.
Whatever, right. And, and why do we want to pin these folks down to this location for this project when we didn't pin down the DPW project, project until we had better numbers? Because part of the issue and part of our discussion was, can the town, or more importantly, is the town willing to finance both these projects? And, you know, you, you know, we may have champagne tastes in a, you know, in, in a, in a seltzer budget. And the point is that when we get down to it, we may say, you know, money was no object, we'd certainly like to put a, a new DPW wherever, but we only have the money to put it someplace else. And similarly, we may make the same decision about an adult center. And I'd hate to have this task force hands tied. And Marie said, well, if they come to a, a, a wall, they'll come back to us. According to this charter, they can't, that, it's, it's that or, you know, it's, that's your goal. It's not come back to us and say, well, you know, there's something better. We didn't, we're not giving, that's not in the motion. And if you want to make the motion, give, give them flexibility, then give them flexibility. Take out the words Turner Park. It still says, based on the recommendation of, of the town manager's task force, that gives them that as a starting point, which is what people want. They want them to take that task force and build on it, that's fine. But don't lock them into Turner Field when we don't know what the costs are going to be. So I'm going to vote against the motion and I encourage other people to do the same thing, because we shouldn't lock in this committee.
The motion is an amendment.
The amendment, I'll vote for the amendment.
Oh, I thought you were saying you're voting against.
I'll vote for the amendment, because I don't think we should lock in, in people at this point.
And the amendment specifically was, how did you?
It deletes the words on Turner Park.
No, what is, Alex, what is it? What does it say?
It says deletes the words on Turner Park.
Okay, so it, then it would be for the development of a new building as recommended by the town manager's task force.
Right.
You realize it's kind of silly.
Well, I didn't make the, I didn't make the motion, Richard.
It's kind of silly, because town manager's task force recommended Turner Park.
Yeah, so that's, the point, it's.
I, I hear you.
It's, okay.
Okay, so that, uh.
You're voting on the amendment?
Yeah, the amendment, so the way we're set up, uh, Marie, and I think you're fairly well in agreement with this, then.
With what?
With this amendment.
E, either way, it's, it's going to get us where I need to be, which is a new building committee.
Okay, well, I'd like, I'd like the motion as amended. What is it? Do you have it, Debbie?
As amended is just to delete on Turner Park.
Okay, and so the primary motion with the deletion then reads, for record?
To establish a building committee for the development of a new building as recommended by the town manager task force on February 9th, 2016.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we've had, uh, we've got the primary motion and Alex's amendment, and we've had discussion. Okay, we're already, uh, all in favor of the amendment? All opposed? Okay. Procedure alone, eh? Marie?
We'll never know with this board.
Yeah, this is a crazy one.
So, do you agree to the?
Amendment, now you vote on the motion as amended?
And what about if the primary motion fails and the whole thing fails?
That's been known to happen.
Yeah. But, uh, okay, uh, all in favor? Okay, I don't want to try to figure that one out.
Okay.
Okay, and you can brief me tomorrow on what we just agreed on.
Okay. As long as Debbie's got it, that's all that counts.
As long as Debbie's got it.
Now, I would like to, before we move off of this, okay, I would really like us to say that we're going to, how many people do we want on it? Do we want two select board members? I'd like us to decide on the composition and then immediately start to. It's, immediately start to advertise.
Well, Marie, the reason I, I was, when I used to talk about two select board members, I was saying if we're going to have a building committee that was separate from any specific project.
Oh, you're talking about the professional building committee.
Yeah, that was what that was about.
Okay. So, how many members do we want on the, um, building committee?
Same as the other one, nine.
Nine?
Nine or seven?
Let's see how many people will apply.
No, 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 we're not going to do that, Mike.
Yogi Beara, welcome back.
No, we're not going to do that.
I think nine makes sense, I mean, because if, if the point is to get a range of viewpoints.
That's a lot of people.
Well, that's what we did for DPW.
Well, if this committee is going to look at possibly, uh, a private public partnership of some way in the ways of building this building, and they start looking at expanded use, I think it could be an interesting building, who knows who will come on it.
And we realize that this committee, okay, we won't go there.
You know, if they, you've got to pick an OPM or an architect or, I mean, I, I think diversity is better for a lot of people.
We've got nine, nine people's a lot of people on the committee.
There's already nine people on it.
Yeah, there's nine, that's on the, that's on the DPW. This is for the.
No, the COA task force.
I know, but that one's been abolished. We're gonna take applications like we did for the, this is gonna be a, a task force from the select board. Steven will get the announcement out, or, excuse me, Debbie, or the town manager will get the announcement out.
It has to go on the website.
Yeah.
Yeah.
No, we have, yeah.
Yeah, we'll, we'll figure it out.
Yeah, why don't you make a motion on that one?
Fine, I'll move that we set the membership of this, uh, select board committee at nine.
Okay, and a second?
Second.
Okay. No more discussion? All in favor? Fine. Uh, let's get it going as quick as we can. Steven, please.
Okay.
I'm managing, you'll be ex officio on this one also?
Sure.
Any select board member wanna be ex officio on this one?
It should be, the liaison.
Oh, yeah, yeah, 'cause you're the liaison. Yeah. Any other one? One? No? Okay. Okay, where are we?
Executive session perhaps, Richard?
CEO, pardon?
One-day liquor license. Is someone sitting here for that?
We're not ready for, you're not ready for.
Someone's here for a one-day liquor license.
Okay. One-day liquor license.
Spent my whole life here.
I'm hoping we approve the one-day liquor license for the Long Meadow, uh, as a fundraiser for the Long Meadow Boys Lacrosse.
That's all we're looking to do.
Yeah, a second.
I'll second, I'll let you serve drinks.
Yeah, can you have one right now?
I'm really sorry, we should've grabbed you. I mean, this, this is a no-brainer. I'm sorry we didn't pull you quicker.
I enjoyed it, actually.
I did have, I did have a lot of switch places. I did have one question. The, uh, the tip server.
Yes.
Uh, it wasn't listed, there was a different name on the application than shown on the card.
Well, it was the, an alumnus is the owner of a number of restaurants, and that was the individual that was actually going to work the event.
Okay, is the one that's gonna work the event tip certified?
Yes.
No, that's, no, this is a different name.
Sharon Comstock is the server.
No, my server's not Comstock. Dan.
He's the owner. Dan is a ex alumni.
Okay.
He's, he's just the person who owns the, uh, all the restaurants, and he's got.
And he's tip certified?
He, uh, I don't know if he is, but she, she is the server.
Well, the application said he's the server.
She's an employee of his.
That was just an error in the application.
Okay. I usually don't get tied into this, but I just happened to notice it.
Yeah, so we were dealing with the owner, and he got us the server.
Okay. Okay. Any other discussion by the board, or any questions?
So, well, what, yeah, what's the event? Where's the, I gotta be.
It's a comedy night at the community house to raise money to buy helmets and uniforms for the kids.
Okay.
We're copying what East Long Meadow did. Um, we have, uh, had been challenged on, uh, on the Booster Club. We're one of the only athletic programs that pays for all of, uh, uniforms, helmets, we, because the Booster Club is so involved. So, we're, we're trying to elevate. We have an alumni weekend, where we're bringing alumni back. We have a comedy night, we have a golf tournament, and then we have a game against Boston College High School. So, it's a.
Wow, this is quite an event.
So, you know, three-day weekend, and then the, uh, Gagne Road races on Sunday. So we've tied the whole thing in to bring.
Yeah, just put it in.
All the alumni back, start trying to raise money.
But you're not gonna sleep in the community center. You're just gonna be there.
We're gonna be out of the community center by ten PM. The event will be done by nine-thirty and cleaned up by ten.
Any other discussion by select board members? All in favor? I bow to you.
Probably.
That's okay. I'm gonna butter to Turner Park.
And you learned something for the first time, right?
I know what to do now.
Join the committee?
Please, please don't spread the word.
Richard.
Yeah.
Is, does anyone have, um, a lot of questions or concerns about the sewer contract?
Well, I, I gotta tell ya, I was out to see on that, I mean, I, I, you know, obviously I can read a contract, but I have no context with which to evaluate it. I, I don't know if it's changed from the old contract, or what, what the issues were, I mean.
Yeah, I'm, Pete and Mario are here to speak to any questions you may have.
No, it's not, it, it, this gets a little annoying, when you present something that, like, without any information, say, "Would you have any questions?" Like, well, I have every question. I mean, I, I'd like to be, you know, briefed on it, and, and, uh, how, how does this relate to the last? I mean, to present a doc, a contract in this way is just not helpful.
Yeah, presentation would be nice, on the pros and cons of it.
Didn't we have a draft out on this?
I think I distributed drafts to select board.
There was a draft that showed proposed changes.
It was last fall, we started talking about this.
Yeah, it was quite a while ago.
Yeah. We were, did we have some, I think I had reported on this throughout the last few months with my town manager's report about the issues that we were dealing with, uh, in terms of, um, how the char, how the charges for capital improvements are made and things like that. I mean, I think I had given some reports on this, so there, what, there has been some context in the town manager reports.
I don't know, but to sort of find all of that, and, and I don't know, you know, what happened between that and this time. I mean, it's just, you know, you really need to bring it all together.
Do you have specific questions, Alex?
Well, I, I mean, I think.
No, it's not a specific, I'm not even at that point, where, you know, if I, if I had a presentation and I understood what, what the issues were, and how, how this contract differs from the la, like, if it's a red line from the last contract, I mean, that'd be the sort of thing that I could ask specific questions.
Let me ask you a question. When, when does this have to be signed?
It's signed as soon as possible.
Yeah, as soon as possible. We kind of, we dealt with, we were working on a couple of provisions, related to some households, so.
No, no.
Yeah, I mean, so it, they're waiting for the communities to sign it, um. So I, like I said, I, I kinda, I thought we had established a context for the agreement. I have the two gentlemen who can best answer, um, you know, questions about it here.
I mean, can they give a presentation? I mean, it'd be nice of, in writing, but, you know.
Not really, no, not a prepared presentation, no.
I guess I.
They could, they could talk, they could give you the context of it verbally. I mean, I just, the, the point is, we have an executive session. We talked about going into it at nine o'clock. If this is gonna be a long discussion, then maybe we should, I thought it was a brief discussion. I mean, the, the short of it is, the big issue that we had talked about, we resolved with, we resolved favorably with the Springfield Water and Sewer Commission, which was the share of capital improvements. I know I talked about that in the past. And then, I mean, there's no real, it's a, it's a fairly standard agreement, uh, that, the other, how many communities? Nine, the nine communities in the, uh, so it, it's a fairly standard agreement that they issued. There are some specifics to us, mostly the, uh, flow rates and things like that, um, requirements for metering and things. I mean, overall, it doesn't, i- it's largely status quo for us in terms of how our wastewater's treated and how we're charged for it. I mean, those are the basic things, and, um, you know, there's not a real, there really weren't a lot of points of negotiation, other than the capital costs, and we don't really, we don't really have any viable alternatives if we don't reach an agreement with them.
Go ahead, Mike.
I, I, my big question is, have, have we had a council to the town review this? And, and I, I guess it would've been nice to, from my perspective, to get a letter, and I don't know if it's from our local town council or somebody like a compliment and page that says, "I've reviewed this and see these changes, and I recommend that." To me, you know, they're the, they're the guys who want, not only see this contract, but they see lots of others, and I would've liked to have seen that. In fact, I'd still like to see that, just as an assurance to me that somebody else is on the hook beside me who's not an attorney reading this very, very long document.
The, uh, I mean, Dave Martel did review it, because like I said, we've been working on this. It's, it's kind of been in the can for several, several months.
But I, I think if our town attorney reviews something, he ought to send us a, a letter saying, "I reviewed this," and whether it, whether it's a, you know, you know, jump ahead to some, whether it's a labor contract or it's a, or it's a sewer contract, I'd like to know that the town attorneys have, have looked at it, and they concur, or they, you know, whatever it is. I think that's part of our.
You need to sit, my report to that isn't, you need to actually see it from them in writing.
But to say, "We've reviewed it with the, the town," whatever it is, but I didn't see your, that, even the reference to a town council in your report, so.
Okay, what's the best time we can do on this? That's why I was wondering, you don't know exactly when it has to be signed?
Yeah, they, they have a deadline, I think, at the end of February that they wanted, but we've been working on, we've been working actively with the commission, because if, if you look at it, there are addresses in there of houses that are either in Long Meadow, but served by Springfield, by the commission as customers, like billing and everything. And then there are people who are in Springfield, who are served by Long Meadow as customers, and we are kind of haggling out, finalizing some of those addresses, but that was really the only outstanding item.
Okay. Um, I'm trying to get the easiest way on this. I mean, Alex would like to see the other one for the changes that were made, and Mark would like to see if we got a letter from the lawyer, uh.
And I would like to see what the, what approvals were made over the previous contract.
Okay, okay, well, that's what, that's what, that's what Alex said, too. Uh, let's bring it back, Steven.
Okay.
Okay.
It's fine.
You familiar?
Do you have any questions now, or am I making?
No, I don't think anybody's had anything specific. I think basically what Alex would like to see is the old contract, and he can lay down and go page by page against the new contract.
Well.
But just, just kind of, just basically, just kind of let you know that this contract, it was a twenty-year contract that expired in two thousand six, so there were some small agreements that they came upon in Springfield.
There, there's no, there's no purpose in having any more discussion here. They're gonna be back to breed. You guys are gonna come back.
Well, they are coming back, 'cause I have questions.
Yeah, we just said, they're gonna get the, they're gonna get the stuff and come back.
All right, so in general, I'm looking at the capital improvement, the changes that were made in that, that, how we were able to work on that, especially, I was worried about the infrastructure that's changes that are occurring with MGM and the load.
That has nothing to do with the contract. The changes that are going on with MGM has no effect on this contract.
So the changes they had to make for, it's not gonna?
Like Steven started to say, the biggest, uh, improvement of this contract is they were trying to make us pay for proportions for their operating expense for the Indian Orchard Farm Station, some underground, uh, river crossing things, which Long Meadow and also Agro-M did not, they were not part of that. So, we had the changes made there. Any improvements that are made to the Springfield, the Bondi's Island facility, that is what we would pay into, but not the other facilities, that they are making changes now.
Okay.
In Springfield, so that was the biggest part of the contract.
Okay.
Any questions, Steven, or what to bring back?
No, we can come up with some, like a memo or something like that.
Okay.
There's a, a contract with Striker through it.
Yeah, Striker, yeah. There, there was a draft out on that. I remember seeing it. Yeah, we had a draft out on it.
And Steven, you said, was the last lawyer to look at this David Martel? And have we been negotiating up to this point, or?
No, I mean, no, I, the negotiations were, um, there was the overall agreement, the part that we were negotiating had changed a really small, uh, big in terms of impact, but small in terms of language, and I do believe he reviewed it after that. I mean, he reviewed it later in the fall. I don't remember the exact date. And then again, we were, part of it was turnover at the commission. The executive director left, and then part of it was Pete has been working with, um, the person who then became the executive director on sorting out these addresses and these individual things that are kind of non-impactful. It's really more just an administrative thing to straighten out who's a customer of Springfield that's in Long Meadow, and who's a customer of Long Meadow that's in Springfield. Uh, but the, the contract itself is really, it's the continuation of like a fifty-year relationship with the commission that the town of Long Meadows had.
So, so our attorney hasn't looked at the final?
The final, not including the attachments. The, the address.
Okay, we'll have the attorney look at it. Okay? You got it all. Okay, come on back. If we need, if you need for us to hold a special meeting, you let me know, and I'll, I'll hold a special meeting.
Okay.
Okay? We'll get it back in. And if anybody thinks of something tonight, get it to Steven, so he can ask.
Yeah, if you think of any questions, it'd be helpful to get them in advance.
But I think we've got, I think basically you wanna bring the, uh, red line copy. That'll show what took place.
And, and is the red line between the original draft, or is it from the old contract?
Old contract.
Old contract.
Okay.
Yeah. All right. Uh, Steven, do we have the attorney here? Okay, do we wanna reset now and go into, uh, executive session?
Sure.
Okay. Uh, I need a motion to go into executive session for, for the purpose of negotiations and litigation to return into open session.
So moved.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Uh, roll call, please.
Marie?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
We took the room.
Yes.
Um. Alex?
Yes.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, we are going to, to, uh, go into executive session. I don't, I'm not sure how long we're gonna be in, but we will return to open session, and LCTV will continue with the programming tonight. Uh, you may get a blank screen at your house. I don't know what you're gonna get, but we will return, so. Thank you, and we'll see you in a little bit.
We know they won't get the test pattern.
They won't get test, no, that's gone. Yeah, that's all gone now.
It'll be an offer.
Yeah, it'll be an.
Yeah, it'll be an. Yeah, it'll be an.
Brian, do you see us down there?
Are you up?
Hello, Brian.
He left.
You know, I'm not sure.
You ready, Richard?
We're getting, I just want to make sure you're awake. We gotta get two more people in.
All right, just give me a thumbs up when you're ready.
Oh, that's right, you can see me.
Yeah.
Good evening again, ladies and gentlemen. We're back from our executive session. We're gonna continue with our regular agenda. We've only got three or four items on here to get through, so we should be able to make it. We got the point registrar.
I'll make a motion if I could read this letter, but I'm gonna try to read it. That I move that we appoint Emmanuel Wenig as the Democratic nominee for the, for registrar. And I would move that we, let's do one at a time.
Sandra Metz.
Thank you. And Sandra Metz as the Republican nominee for registrar position.
I'll second it for purposes of discussion, but I mean, Stephen Kennedy and Gerald Nollet are still...
They're still on there.
They're still on there.
Right, right, but we have to appoint one new person.
Right, so why you made reference to two?
Two. One Democrat and one Republican.
Yeah, but we, you see, there's only one spot open.
Only one slot.
Oh, no.
Yeah, no, no.
There's only one slot.
Yeah, because...
There's only one slot that's open.
Right, right. And that's why they highlighted it.
So you need one Democrat.
Okay, I withdraw.
You need one Republican.
Yeah, I'm gonna withdraw my motion then.
Okay, so, all right, so...
I withdraw my motion, you're right.
So at this point, we have one Democrat and one Republican, and then Sandra Metz is expiring. Now, the statute that was attached to it said that you can't have two members of the same party. So it seems like we're out of compliance as of this time.
I would say so.
Well, there's only two parties. Is there a Libertarian? We don't know about it yet.
Well, I think that there is something called an unenrolled.
Yeah, but that doesn't follow the statute.
But the statute says it has to be a member of one of the two established parties.
Yes.
I saw that part too, so this isn't as easy as I thought it was gonna be.
No, it isn't. We all even throw another wrench.
I think we just, it's a choice between the two. So what it's gonna be is it's gonna be depending, so I guess a motion, I move, we choose Sandra Metz. And then we see what wins.
Let me kick something out too. You know what bothers me on the whole thing?
What?
We have, we don't have, we don't have any input from our town clerk on this either. And I don't know why we don't have some kind of input. And she deals with these people. She, she might know something that we need to know.
I'm not sure if she can say what she prefers.
Well, she can certainly...
She's never been asked.
Really?
Well, see, but...
She gets Kathy's of these. She knew all this was going on.
Yeah, yeah, but I mean, we don't know, we don't know what she wants to say either.
Right, I mean, it's really...
I don't think, I mean, as I read the statute, it says that we shall appoint their successor as nearly as possible that the members of the board shall represent the two leading political parties, provided that in no case shall an appointment be made so as to cause a board to have more than two members, including the city or town clerk of the same political party.
Well, there aren't more than two members of the same political party.
There are right now.
There aren't more than two.
Not more than two.
There are two.
There's two.
There's exactly two.
So in other words, you can't have all three one party.
And Maria, you know what I'd like to do is, I don't even recall, we have to go back and look maybe, Paul, you even recall, but I, you know, maybe it makes sense that right now we have two Republicans and a Democrat. We replace the Republican with a Democrat, and the next time we replace the Democrat with a Republican. And so that it goes from right now two Republicans and a Democrat to two Democrats and a Republican. And I say that as somebody who's unenrolled and don't really care.
I say Sandra Metz has served in that position for years.
I know she has.
And so to pull her out, I mean, she has the experience. And I don't know if the parties, I mean, all they're doing is watching that it's done legally, right?
But this, the complexion of this group changed last election.
Yeah, because there was no one else that, the Democrats never put in anyone for the seconds, for the empty seat. And that's why it ended up that way.
Okay, I still, I still have a request made of the board, and you don't have to follow any, I'd like to see what the town clerk has to say.
That's fine with me, as long as there's no rush.
Yeah, I don't think...
We don't have...
You can, you know, you have a meeting scheduled for next Monday. If you get on that agenda, it should be clarified by then. I don't think there's any need for any registrar's meeting between now and then.
Right, 'cause if they could look at some of the history of the placements in terms of the, you know, equal representation from Democrats and Republicans, I think that's only fair.
And then if, as Alex says, do they ever pick an unenrolled? Or do we have a Green Day Party member?
No, I actually, forget what I said. I thought, I thought you couldn't have more than one.
Okay.
I'm with Mark, I'm unenrolled and I don't care.
You know what, you know what they're asking for? To tell Kathy?
Who does she want?
It sounds like they would like her to send maybe the clarification as to maybe some of the, about the enrollments and maybe some of the history about the complexion of the boards, whether they're two-one Democrat or two-one Republican.
Well, and also, in all honesty, I don't know the performance of any of these people. And she may have some information that we just don't know.
Yeah.
There's no performances, did they show up?
Well, maybe.
There's a lot more to it than that. And I actually think Richard's point is well taken.
So I mean, she's, she's our person on the ground, so...
Right, I mean, sometimes they will cover and they will do extra hours for registration when they have to stay open till eight o'clock, things of that nature. If there are any controversial things when it comes to elections, is that's when they really have to get involved. That really hasn't happened in a while.
Why, but when you do, it makes you have somebody good in there.
Okay, I'm gonna put the next agenda, additional oppositions.
That's fine.
Carry it over.
Oh, I withdraw my motion.
Carry it over.
And you withdrew your motion, right?
Okay, so anyone like to give us a motion to close the town warrant?
Yeah, I'll, I'll move that we close the town warrant.
Do you second?
I'll second it.
Okay, discussion?
I, I'll just say this briefly. I don't, I don't understand what it means to close the warrant because we're continuing to work on it. But for some reason, this board thinks that we're accomplishing something by closing it, but I'll leave it at that.
Okay, I, anybody else have anything? Okay, all in there? All opposed? Okay, that's the town warrant. If I'm not missing something...
The agreement?
Yeah, yeah.
The firefighters agreement?
Right.
That thing we just talked about?
Yeah, the thing we just talked about, okay.
I'll make a motion that we approve the, we approve, approve a tentative contract between the town of Long Meadow and the International Association of Firefighters, Local 1903, for a contract that will run from, it was June, July first?
Two thousand fifteen.
Two thousand fifteen through June thirtieth, two thousand eighteen?
Yes, three years.
Three years.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? Do you know further discussion? All in favor? All opposed? All the way around. Okay, we do have a little open time. It's up to the board's pleasure. Do we want to talk about anything on the budget? If anyone's got something they want to get out or get some more documentation from Stephen prior to our next meeting?
Just a kind of a quick of who's coming in next?
Council on Aging Director Amy Sada, Parks and Rec Director Barry Jarvis.
And that is on Wednesday?
Wednesday, Wednesday. Stephen, you think you might be here now?
I'm gonna see if I can make arrangements to have somebody take my daughter to a concert.
Okay, well, you know...
I'll take her.
I'll do the best I can to be here.
So, Richard, I had a question. And when are we gonna talk about the capital items?
Yeah.
Seventeenth. I didn't get confirmation again from Stephen, but I believe it's the fourteenth.
Richard and I both talked to the Chair, Dr. Metz, last week, and neither of us can remember what the conversation was, other than we, you need to get in. Like I said, I distributed the report with all the applications and all that kind of information. And we talked about, you guys need to get in and give your report. And I thought we had talked about dates, but then it just escaped both of us what we actually said.
And both of us called asking the other one for clarification?
Yeah, and I thought we had said bring him in on Monday the fourteenth. But I cannot remember if that's what we agreed, so Richard's following up with him to get him on. But they, they are ready, they've been ready, and I think I mentioned before, they've been waiting for me to give them the high sign. And so the delay really is my, is on me.
And what about the CPC projects? Normally we have them come in and they give a presentation.
We'll see if we can get Steve in here too.
There is an outline within the draft warrant.
No, I saw those, but I mean, normally they give a presentation.
Can I ask a question about that? Last year's warrant?
Like we get the applications and stuff.
I had, and when, when Steve Weiss was here, I suggested that they group together all their CPC items from the same sub-fund. It's not too late to change that. I mean, they, it's not by petition. Can we consider doing that, so we say, from the CPC fund for, you know, I think there's three or four. And we can consolidate.
Yeah, make them less, you know, that's a good idea.
Most of them aren't controversial.
I don't know what you mean, what do you mean by sub-fund?
So, so the community preservation actually has money in, and you can see it in that, in the warrant there. But one I know is like housing, and one's open space, and one is something else.
Historic.
Historic, and it's actually subgroupings of CPC. And each one is funded, and each one gets distributed, Alex, from those sub-funds. And so to the extent that, for example, it might be the open space, if they've got five recommendations coming out of the open space bucket, say, from open space, this, this, this for that amount.
I think if you look on page three, Alex, that there's also, right, what we'll do is we can list the projects coming down vertically, and we can list the funding sources going across horizontally, we'll make a table of all of them. It's kind of, there's no money on the top of page three, but it would be in that, in that type of example.
Hey Brian, do you see us down there?
Are you up?
Hello Brian.
You know, I'm not sure.
You ready Richard?
Uh, we're getting, I just want to make sure you're awake, uh, we gotta get two more people in.
Alright, uh, just give me a thumbs up when you're ready.
Oh, that's right, you can see me.
Yup.
Good evening again ladies and gentlemen, we're back from our executive session, we're gonna continue with our regular agenda. Uh, we've only got three or four items on here to get through, so we should be able to make it. Uh, we got the point registrar.
Yeah, I'll make a motion if I, if I could read this letter, but I'm, I'm gonna try to read it, that, that I move that we appoint Emmanuel Wenig as the Democratic nominee for the, for registrar and I would move that we, uh... Let's, let's do one at a time.
Sandra Metz.
It says Sandra.
Sandra Metz.
Thank you, and Sandra Metz as the Republican, uh, nominee for, for registrar position.
Well, I'll second it for purposes of discussion, but, I mean, would Stephen Kennedy and Gerald Nollet are still...
They're still on there.
They're still on there.
Right, right, but, but we have to appoint one new person.
Right, so why you, why you made reference to two?
Two.
One Democrat and one Republican.
Yeah, but we, you see, there's only one spot open.
Only one slot.
Oh, no.
No, no, no.
No, 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 no.
Yeah, no, no.
There's only one slot.
Yeah, because... Right, right, and that's why they highlighted it.
So you need one Democrat.
Oh, okay, I withdraw, no, he's right.
You need one Republican.
Yeah, I, I'm gonna withdraw my motion then, that's right.
I have no idea what's going on.
Alright, so, there's only one, okay, so at this point, we have one Democrat and one Republican, and then Sandra Metz is expiring.
Yes.
Now, the statute that was attached to it said that you can't have two members of the same party, so it seems like we're out of compliance as of this time.
I would say so.
Well, there's only two parties.
I know, but...
Is there a Libertarian, we don't know about it yet?
Well, I think, well, I think that there is something called an unenrolled.
Yeah, but that's, that doesn't follow the statute.
But, but the statute says it has to be a member of one of the two established parties.
Yes.
I saw that part too, so, this isn't as easy as I thought it was gonna be.
No, it isn't. We all even throw another wrench.
Well, I think we just, it, it is a choice between the two, so, what it's gonna be is it's gonna be depending, so I guess a motion, I move, we choose Sandra Metz, and then we see what wins.
Let me kick something out too, you know what bothers me on the whole thing?
What?
We have, we don't have, we don't have any input from our town clerk on this either, and I don't know why we don't have some kind of input. Uh, and she deals with these people, she, she might know something that we need to know.
I'm not sure if she can say what she prefers.
Well, she can certainly...
She's never been asked.
Yeah.
Really?
Well, it, it's yeah, but...
She gets Kathy's of these, she knew all this was going on.
Yeah, yeah, but I mean, we don't know, we don't, we don't know what she wants to say either.
Right, I mean, 'cause it's, it's really...
I, I don't think, I mean, as I read the statute, it says that we shall appoint their successor as nearly as possible, that the members of the board shall represent the two leading po- political parties, provided that in no case shall an appointment be made so as to cause a board to have more than two members, including the city or town clerk of the same political party.
Well, there aren't more than two members of the same political party.
There are right now.
There are more than two, there are two.
Not more than two. There's two.
There's exactly two.
So in other words, you can't have all three one party.
Oh, alright, alright.
And Marie, I, you know, what I'd like to do is, I, I don't even recall, I, we have to go back and look maybe, Paul, you even recall, but, I, you know, maybe it makes sense that right now we have two Republicans and a Democrat, we replace the Republican with a Democrat, and the next time we replace the Democrat with a Republican, and so that it goes from right now two Republicans and Democrat to two Democrats and a Republican.
Well, I, I...
And I say that as somebody who's unenrolled and don't really care.
I saw Sandra Metz has served in that position for years, and so, to pull her out, I mean, she has the experience, and I don't know if the parties, I mean, all they're doing is watching that it's done legally, right?
But this thing, this, the complexion of this group changed last election.
Yeah, because there was no one else that, that, the Democrats never put in anyone for the seconds, for the empty seat.
Okay.
And that's why it ended up that way.
Okay, I still, I still have a request to make to the board, and you don't have to follow, I, I'd like to see what the town clerk has to say.
That's fine with me, as long as there's no rush, is there...
Yeah, I don't think...
We don't have...
You can, you know, you have a meeting scheduled for next Monday, I think on that agenda, it should be clarified by then, I don't think there's any need for any registrars meeting between now and then.
Right, 'cause if they could look at some of the history of the placements in terms of the, um, you know, equal representation from Democrats and Republicans, I think that's only fair.
And then if, as Alex says, is, do they ever pick an unenrolled, or do we have a Green Day Party member?
No, I actually, forget what I said, I, I thought, I thought you, you couldn't have more than one, so...
Okay, Stephen, can we, I, I'm with Mark, I'm unenrolled and I don't care.
You know what, you know what they're asking for, to tell Kathy?
Who does she want?
It sounds like they would like her to sense, maybe the clarification, as to maybe some of the, about the enrollments, and, and maybe some of the history about the complexion of the boards, whether they're two one Democrat or two one Republican.
Well, and, and also, in all honesty, I don't know the performance of any of these people, and she may have some information that we just don't know about.
Yeah.
Performance, did they show up?
Well, maybe.
Okay.
There's a lot more to it than that, and I actually think Richard's point is well taken.
So, I mean, she's, she's our, our person on the ground, so...
Right, I mean, I, sometimes they will cover, and they will do extra hours for, for registration when they have to stay open until eight o'clock, things of that nature, um, if there are any controversial things when it comes to elections, is that's when they really have to get involved, that really hasn't happened in a while.
Why, but when you do, it makes you have somebody good in there.
Okay, I, I, I'm gonna put the next agenda, if there's no opposition.
That's fine.
Carry it over.
Oh, I withdraw my motion.
Carry it over.
And you withdrew your motion, right?
Okay, so anyone, anyone like to give us a motion to close the town warrant?
Yeah, I'll, I'll move that we close the town warrant.
Do you second?
I'll second it.
Okay, discussion?
I, I'll just say this briefly, I don't, I don't understand what it means to close the warrant because we're continuing to work on it, but, for some reason, this board thinks that we're accomplishing something by closing it, but, I'll leave it at that.
Okay. Okay, I, anybody else have anything? Okay, all in favor? All opposed? Okay, that's the town warrant, um, if I'm not missing something.
The agreement.
Yeah, yeah.
The firefighters agreement.
Right.
Oh.
That thing we just talked about?
Yeah, the thing we just talked about, okay.
You know, I'll, I'll make a motion that we approve the, we approve, approve a tentative contract between the town of Long Meadow and the International Association of Firefighters, Local nineteen oh three, for a contract that will run from, it was June, July first?
Two thousand fifteen.
Fifteen, through June thirtieth, two thousand eighteen, I believe.
Yes, three years.
Three years.
Second.
Okay, any, any further discussion? See no further discussion, all in favor? All opposed? All the way around. Okay, we do have a little open time, uh, it's up to the board's pleasure, do we want to talk about anything on the budget, if anyone's got something they want to get out, or get some more documentation from Stephen prior to our next meeting?
Just to kind of a quick of who, who's coming in next?
Uh, Council on Aging Director Amy Sada, Parks and Rec Director Barry Jarvis.
And that is on Wednesday.
Wednesday, Wednesday. Stephen, you think you might be here now?
I'm gonna see if I can make arrangements to have somebody come take my daughter to her concert.
Okay, well, you know...
I'll take her.
Yeah, I may, I may, um, I may try and make other arrangements, I'll do the best I can to be here.
So, Richard, I had a question. And when are we gonna talk about the capital items?
Yeah.
It's the fourteenth, I didn't get confirmation again from Stephen, but I believe it's the fourteenth.
Richard and I both talked to the Chair, Dr. Metz, last week, um, and neither of us can remember what the conversation was, other than, we, you need to get you in, like I said, I distributed the report with all the applications and all that kind of information. Um, and we talked about, you guys need to get in, give your report, um, and I thought we had talked about dates, but then, it just escaped both of us what we actually said.
Okay.
And both of us called asking the other one to clarify?
Yeah, and I thought we had said bring him in on Monday the fourteenth, um, but I cannot remember if that's what we agreed, so Richard's following up with them to get him on it, but they, they, they are ready, they've, they've been ready, and I think I've mentioned this before, they've been waiting for me to, to give them the high sign, and so the delay really is, is mine, it's on me.
And what about, um, the CPC projects, normally we have them come in and they give a presentation.
We'll see if we can get Steve in here too.
Yeah, but there, there is an outline within the, the draft warrant.
No, I saw those, but I mean, I, like, normally, they give a presentation.
Can I ask a question about that, at the last year's warrant?
Like, we get the applications and stuff.
I had, and I, and when, when Steve Weiss was here, I had suggested that they group together all their CPC items from the same sub-fund, it's not too late to change that, I mean, they, it's not by petition, can we consider doing that, so we say, from the CPC fund for, you know, I think there's three or four, and we can consolidate.
Yeah, make them less, you know, that's a good idea.
I mean, most of them aren't controversial.
I, I don't know what you mean, what you mean by sub-fund?
So, so the, the community preservation actually has money in, in, and you can see it in that, in the warrant there.
Yeah.
But one I know is like housing, and one's open space, and one is some, something else.
Historic.
Historic, and it's actually subgroupings of CPC, and each one is funded, and each one gets distributed, Alex, from those sub-funds, and so, to the extent that, for example, it might be the open space, if they've got five recommendations coming out of the open space bucket, say, from open space, this, 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 with that amount.
I think if you look on page three, Alex, that there's also, right, what we'll do is we can list the projects coming down vertically, and we can list the funding sources going across horizontally, we'll make a table of all of them, it's kind of, there's no money on the top of page three, but it would be in that, in that type of example. So again, we'd have project one coming down, project one might be come out of, in this particular case, it wouldn't be raised and appropriate, but it might be their undesignedated, project two, whatever it is, might, some might come out of undesignedated, some might come out of another category of historical, so we would use a table similar to what's on the top of page three.
I think we ought to have a motion for each separate, in my opinion, instead of one for community preservation is, you know, from, and, you know, two.
You want to have separate motions?
It would be like three separate motions, one for each bucket, I mean, I'm fine with one.
If we can get away with one, let's give it a try.
You can't get away with one, I mean, the, the problem is, there are, there are some projects that have multiple funding sources, you know, there's some money that's coming out of undesignedated, and some money that's coming out of historical, there's at least two of them.
Yeah, and, and in the past, what we've done is we've included it in both places, and hope to goodness that both parts pass, otherwise you only got half a part funded, but I remember we've done that, not necessarily, well, we did it if something was partially CPC and partially capital, or something like that, I'm fine, Paul, if we do one, one motion.
Yeah, I mean, it would be similar to the way we do capital.
But right now, we've got like...
No, I understand, you have about five, five different articles.
Yeah.
Yeah, we, um, I, I can design something that we can do it in one.
And is anybody else objected?
It's worth a try, I mean, we have a, it's gonna be a lot of discussion, um, town meeting, let's try to narrow our...
Town meeting floor though, can, someone on town meeting floor can vote to split up or amend the articles, so...
They could amend the article, right.
Exactly.
And since we're just waving them through, I was waving through one vote here.
Yeah.
And put them on the same article, I, 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 the only thing I would say is, is there something in the Statute of Community Preservation Act itself that requires them to be separate articles?
Not, not that I'm aware of, but we can ask Mr. Weiss if he has any knowledge of it.
Okay.
And at most, it'd be from each bucket, so...
So, Paul, you were referring to a, a chart?
Yeah, on, on the, on the hard copy that I have on the top of page three.
Reset, it says multi-fun, the, that's...
Yeah, it says multi, kind of, what we would do, Alex, is just have a project down here.
Okay, yeah.
We have project one, project two, and then we have the funding sources, so project one might have money here, project two...
That's fine, yeah, okay, alright, I just...
And Alex, that, it just seems to me that, first of all, people can see all the projects from community preservation at once, and...
Yeah, no, that's good, that's good.
Okay, can I recap, we have three items to defer, Stephen, you're gonna get the applications going out for the COA thing, uh, we had the appointment registrar, we're gonna bring that back next meeting, we're gonna check with the clerk, uh, Energy Task Force was there, uh, next meeting, because you guys wanted a little more time to look at the scopes and all that?
If they want to make changes to it before we vote on it.
Right.
So...
Is there any, anybody have any other requirements they'd like Marie to get them to on that thing, or?
Do you need anything else from me?
I, I do think that, it talks about energy, uh, I mentioned this when they were here, but this is for, if we're making edits on the select board level.
Mm-hmm.
I do think that, um, consolidation of budgetary line items, which is something that's been talked about for a long time, should be a goal.
We're not putting goals in this, we're, we're making recommendation of projects, we're not listing goals.
But it should be a policy of the town that utility items are consolidated.
Stephen, as much as I agree with you, I think burdening this task force with that is gonna sink the task, I mean, potentially, I, I, and I agree with you, it needs to be done, I just think that we oughta use some other mechanism.
I'm not putting solar stuff in there, I'm not putting any specific projects in there, we have a whole series of stuff we're gonna bring to each of the committees, and I'd be glad to put that on there, but I hate to put an actual project in what is the establishment of the committee.
I guess I'd say it's not an actual project, it, it's really, by consolidating the utilities.
Right, it's, it's definitely...
It's more efficient, if, if the goal is to reduce consumption and save, and save money, that to me is the one thing straight away you can do that will accomplish both of those things.
Well, put it on, that's a goal, it's not a policy, okay.
I'd love to see them come forward and suggest that as a recommendation to both the select board and the school committee.
Yes, and I will bring that up as one of the lists of goals.
We'll see if Marie can handle it, see if Marie can handle things properly, like wastewater contract, the way we left it, uh...
We'll have a, we'll have a, a memo, kind of explaining the, the nitty gritty of it.
And you got the red lines, and you can send it to Alex, one of the red line copies.
And the attorney's gonna look at the file.
Yeah, and have, just to check off on the attorney.
Sure.
Just to make sure it was double checked.
So, uh, and, one question I had, since Paul's here, Article fourteen refers to two hundred and twelve thousand, two hundred and twelve, uh...
Yep, two hundred and twelve thousand five hundred.
Five hundred, where does, I was trying to figure out where in the budget that is, and I couldn't find it.
There's a three-page summary.
But I mean, like, on the fourteen-page, uh...
It, it's not on the fourteen-page, um, what, it'd be on...
Why wouldn't it be, I mean, doesn't this account for everything?
Yeah, but the, the, the two hundred and twelve five is eventually going to be scattered throughout that fourteen-page document, and I don't know how much I'm gonna have to put into the fire line item, I don't know how much I'm gonna have to put into the police line item, I don't know how much I'm gonna have to put into the town treasures line.
How many contracts do we have coming up this year?
Four.
You have one, two, three, you have four, plus you also have your non-unit people also that, uh...
And so what are the four?
Two police, fi- actually, you have five, you have two police, fire, CPW clerical.
It's five, it's actually six.
And then the non-unit.
And dispatch.
And dispatchers.
Oh, dispatchers, oh.
Right, and then you're gonna have your non-unit people also.
Okay.
So, so the budget that we're gonna present, is it gonna be this number that's...
The budget you would present is gonna be the bottom of the...
The sixty-five.
Um, it's...
Sixty-five, one, sixty-four?
Uh, sixty-two, one ninety-nine, is the one without the two million nine sixty-five, I think that's the number in between, that those, those are the special revenue funds from the school.
I see.
So it's the number right above.
Yeah, yeah.
I got you, so, but this two twelve is gonna be part of the FY seventeen budget?
It, it, it's a separate article, the budget's gonna be voted in article, well, we have it now in article whatever it is, eight, but this money also has to be appropriated, so as the collective bargaining agreements become finalized, it would give the authority to transfer money out of the two hundred and twelve thousand dollar pot, and put it into the specific line items that it needs to cover.
Does that mean, Paul, if I can just intercept here, that, that Article eight, which is the budget, is gonna be two hundred and twelve thousand dollars less than what we're seeing in these pages here?
No, it is what you are gonna see on, it's what you see on the fourteen-page report.
Yeah.
And then two hundred and twelve five additional.
Where's it gonna, what's the source for that additional expenditure?
Raised and appropriate, taxation.
And that's still, but, was that included in your, here's how much room you got?
Yes, you will find that number on, on the summary sheet that I have, with the sources and uses.
The three-page summary sheet.
Right, on the first page, you're gonna have the, the line that you see for capital.
Yeah, Alex.
I believe somewhere right above there is a two hundred and twelve five number.
Where's, where's this?
So Alex, if I can clarify...
Where I see for capital?
Yeah, above that, the amount that you see for capital, one point four.
Right, right.
Right, right, somewhere a couple lines above that.
Oh, yeah, yeah, salary adjustment's not allocated.
Now I know, exactly.
Line twenty-two eight, thank you.
Where are you?
Line twenty-two eight.
Yeah, this is how we do this.
Thank you.
I mean, everybody's clear why we do, why we take this approach, right?
We've done this in the past.
We've done it in the past, in the absence of this, we'd have to go back to town meeting to, to fund the collective bargaining agreement, so you may have, you know, granted that the fire is potentially done, and we can make the arrangements to have that, you know, transferred over a, at, at the Maytown meeting, but police may not be done until July, and they would have to wait till the fall town meeting, and then you may have the clerical that's not due, that they're done until after the fall town meeting, and they're gonna have to wait till the following town meeting, or have a special town meeting, so this consolidates it all, and then we can move the money out of there.
So, but the two twelve five is gonna help pay the certain town side salaries for FY seventeen?
Correct.
Now, the, because the description then, I probably should say we have six outstanding contracts to negotiate, and, I know in the past, select board members have complained, are we now giving them a, a, a bottom, or are we giving them the ceiling?
Yeah, that's why we don't, that's why we don't carry it in the individual line item in the department, you keep it as a collective, and, and that's why we don't really also oversell the fact that it's for collective bargaining, I mean, we, I think we're a lot more, as, I think we're a lot more transparent, um, than perhaps other parts of the town organization on this particular thing, but, um, that's why we do it that way, and, and to answer your question earlier, Alex, but the, the fourteen-page line item thing is only expenditures, that's the detail, the expenditures, the main budget is the sources and use statement, which is the three-page thing that we also hand out.
But, but, just as a historical reference, the town at one, one time used to be very happy, saying, when we settle, we settle, we'll go find the money, which is the, we'll go back and figure it out, you know, I'm, I'm not sure that's a better management system, but it, it was a historical process.
This, this is the pattern that we followed for the last number of three-year contract cycles.
We have anything else with the common good? Nothing? How about a motion to adjourn?
So, vote.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Ladies and gentlemen, we appreciate you tuning in tonight, we're gonna be back here Wednesday evening, uh, that, that particular agenda is gonna be dedicated to discussion of the budget, we'll have several of the other division chiefs in to tell their story, and we'll have the open session with the select board members at that time, thank you and have a nice evening.